Good evening. It is Tuesday, June 22, 2021. This is the business meeting for the School Board of Indian River County. It is time to start our meeting. So I'll call the meeting to order. It is 6:00 PM officially. And at this time, I'd like to call Mr. John Teske forward, please, for the pledge of allegiance. He will lead us. Please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Teske. Hey, board members, we're going to adopt the orders of the day as we discussed in today's workshop. One of the consent items was moved to action, and that is the English Language Arts Instructional Materials item. Board members, are there any other items that you wish to move from consent to action? Superintendent?
Yes, I do have one item that I need to pull a job description. And I'll give you one second. I will find it. It is the under 8B, the ESE paraprofessional job description. I'm going to pull that and then work with the union to bring it back.
You said 8B?
8B, correct.
May I ask a question about that?
Yes, Dr. Schiff. You were recognized.
Yeah. In pulling 8B, that's also approval of all the...
Just the job...
So just to clarify, it's only the job description and not the rest of 8B? Just want to make that clear. Okay.
Correct.
Any other items? Yes, I also see 5B. Those are the business meeting minutes from 6:00 to 8:00 for correction. So those will be moved to next meeting. Is that correct, Ms. Sessman? Okay.
Bless you.
All right. All right.
Okay. I'll call for a motion. Is there a motion for adopting the orders of the day?
I'll make a motion. Second.
Okay, thank you. And a second?
Dr. Schiff. I'm sorry, adopting the orders as amended.
Yes, as amended. Thank you. Okay. And let's have a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, is Mr. Barefoot on yet? He wasn't on? Okay. So it's 4-0 vote. Thank you. Okay. At this time, we're going to have citizen input. Oh, I'm sorry, yes. Why does she have this next? Sorry. We have her proclamation.
Shining Star.
We have shining star first.
Yes. We have presentations. Thank you. Shining Star Award.
We do have a number of presentations. I want to, with a little bit of leeway, begin our first presentation. The Florida Department of Education released third grade scores today. This has been a long-awaited release. And when I say a long-awaited release, this is the first official statewide data point that we have post-pandemic. And I think everyone in the community across the nation has been preparing for a great deal of decline as a result of the pandemic. And as you recall, we shut down our school systems, as did the entire state of Florida, on March 13. We quickly created a very... a number of different options to complete the school year. We were shut down and did virtual for the summer. And then we opened up with 62% of our students in brick and mortar. And then over the course of time, we grew to 85%. We heard a lot about COVID loss, learning loss, learning slide. And we were anticipating or preparing for the worst. In fact, there are 54 districts in the state of Florida of 67 that actually declined from the year 2019. There are only four districts in the state of Florida that improved, and there's a total of 13 that maintained or approved. The school district of Indian River County is not one of the 54 districts that declined. We were one of the districts that maintained our 60% pre-pandemic. And that is something we should be extremely proud of, preparing for... It is a reflection of the hard work of our educators, of our support staff, of our principals. We were a district that never took our foot off the gas in the midst of the pandemic. We committed a series of professional development for our administrators. We created a strategic plan, a strategic plan that puts us in the top 10 of most categories academically across the state. We improved 10 percent... or 10 rankings in state rankings when you look at our third grade scores. And that's something to be extremely, extremely proud of. When you look at other districts around us, you see decline all around us, but not here in the school district of Indian River County. When you look at the smallest percent of schools with Level 1 students, we are the 15th-ranked district with the lowest level percent of Level 1s. And we're the 20th percentile per 20th percent... 20 ranked... 20th ranking in the highest percent of Level 5s. So the district is making significant movement. As you know, we're in the midst of a joint plan as it relates to unitary status. And we've been working through a desegregation order for a very, very, very long time. And we made a commitment to improve the performance of our African-American students. The state declined three percentage points in African-American students. The school district of Indian River County improved three percentage points. So that's a significant rate of improvement for us as a system. This is a sign of things that are yet to come in terms of the improvement of performance here in the school district of Indian River County. We have a strategic plan that is set. We have faculty and staff who are fully committed to our students and doing everything that they need to do in the midst of a pandemic. So as we close out what has been a very odd and complicated school year, we are so excited about what lies in front of our children, our teachers, and our staff. So this is just our first presentation. Looking forward to coming back at later board meetings and providing additional information regarding the rest of our academic outcomes. But this is a great sign. So that is our first presentation. And I will turn it over to Ms. Maddox for our second presentation.
Good evening. Thank you for being here with us tonight. I'm going to start this presentation out in a positive way because the way I had planned started out was, it sounded negative. So most of you may have heard about a week ago, we had 18 students who survived a very bad bus accident. So can we just clap first for that? And we just wanted to bring a few people here tonight that were just so important in getting our students off the bus safely, handling all of the emergency procedures and protocols, dealing with the students and getting them to their families. And it was just amazing. Everyone came together to make sure that all the kids were okay. We even had passerbys passing by to stop and help. And there were some students on the bus, too, who we heard helped the other students off. So it was just... it was something very scary that happened, and it had just an amazing ending. So tonight, I would like to bring out our Director of Transportation, Ms. Jennifer Idlet. And Mr. Tony Sears, our Safety Operations Manager for South County. And last, but certainly not least, I want to hear a big round of applause for Ms. Nikki Norris. She was the bus driver. We're very proud of you. I'm not going to cry because I'm not a pretty crier. I'm an ugly crier. So we have our shining star awards. Mr. Sears? Thank you very much. And Ms. Idlet? Thank you. And Nikki, I'm going to give you this award and also present you with the shining star award for this month for getting all of our kids through the bus accident.
Good evening, everyone. I just want to let you know that we do practice evacuation drills annually, but we never hope to experience it. But when it does happen, we're just so proud of our students, the way that they followed and executed everything that they were taught. Our transportation professional, Ms. Nikki Norris, could not have performed any better. So it was such a tragic, not tragic, but unfortunate event. Thank God it wasn't tragic. But unfortunate is something we never want to experience. But like I said, if it happens, we're just happy that they're prepared and know how to execute the plan. So we're very proud and thankful for our community members. As well as Ms. Maddox mentioned, many passerbys stopped and jumped into action. So we're just happy that everything just came together as best as possible in this incident. So thank you.
And all three of these individuals were on the scene. Mr. Sears, you were out there taking care of our kids, making sure that they got to the right parent, checking off the list. I know you were working super hard because I was communicating back and forth. So I just wanted to make sure everyone knew what his part was in that day. So again, thank you so much. If we can get a picture over here with the board, please?
So before our shining stars depart, I just want to personally thank each and every single one of you for your going above and beyond. And as Ms. Idlet says, this is something you prepare for and you train for and you hope that you never have to use. And I can tell you, I was actually in Tampa getting ready for a state presentation to our board members were there. And Mr. Bass came up and whispered in my ear, "We just had a bus accident," and it flipped over. So you can imagine how stressful I was, you know, across on the other side of the state. Mr. Bass just very calmly said, "Don't worry. We got this. We have the right people in place." And I just took a little breath, took a deep breath, said a little prayer, and realized we absolutely do have the right people in place. So thank you so much for everything that you do in such a scary environment. You guys did an absolutely outstanding job. Thank you. Our final presentation for this evening is a very special presentation to me and I think for us as a community.
They're just celebrating the stars back there.
I have the opportunity to meet with the NAACP president pretty frequently. And one of our meetings about a month ago, Mr. Tony Brown asked me, "Do I know where the first black school was in our community?" And my answer was the wrong answer. And he took that time to share with me an event that took place last Saturday. And it was identifying where at... I'm going to say it wrong. Schumee Park, there is actually the ground in which the first black school in our community resided. And they were having a special event where they were going to place a historical marker at that site to acknowledge that is being ultimately sacred ground. And as I heard about that and Tony shared with me, I wanted to take the opportunity to learn a little bit more. So Mr. Seymour, in his new role, is hard at work and fast at work. Had the opportunity to connect me with the Gifford Historical Museum and Cultural Center. And I had the opportunity to go on that tour, and it was powerful. It was very, very powerful. And anyone in the audience, if you haven't had the opportunity to see a small building filled with a great deal of history, you need to do that. And then we walked over to Gifford Middle School where we have a legacy room established for the Gifford... the old Gifford High School. And once again, more history in terms of the impact that individuals throughout our history have made here in our community. And I wanted to ensure as a public school system that we took every opportunity to acknowledge where that school resided. So I created the opportunity for us to have a proclamation. And as we bring the group out, I've asked Johnny Mae Perry, who will be coming out in a second, if this proclamation could reside in one of those two historical locations to acknowledge the support that this school district, this school board, has as it relates to our African-American students and creating a school system that ensures that each and every single child has everything that they need to claim their success. When I had the opportunity to speak at that event, I spoke through the movement of schools, going back for, you know, a very, very, very long time. And here we are, fast forward, still in the midst of a desegregation order. And what an opportunity for us to acknowledge how we, as a community, can come together to unite and create a school system, schools connecting our community to creating opportunities for all students. That's the power of public education. And when you put your hearts and your mind to work, not only will you experience the results that we just shared for our third grade, our third grade students, but you create a lifetime of children achieving their potential. And this is an opportunity for us, as a school board and a community, to acknowledge where it all started for so many people in our community. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Seymour for some additional remarks, and then he will give it over to Ms. Maddox.
Thank you. Again, I have to commend Dr. Moore for making that effort. But it's what we're about, and it's all about community and continuing to reach out to those who have information that we can utilize to better prepare our students for classes. In this history, there have been so many different things that I thought I knew. I went to Gifford Middle School, but prior to that, it was Gifford Elementary before I went to Osceola. And we talked of some of the same teachers and some of the information. But I know there's more history behind this than I can ever come up with. And I actually learned more than I honestly knew. And the connectivity, you know, of this group, and if you know of Gifford High School, it's a very powerful group. And when you hear of some of the titles and the backgrounds of these individuals, these are the people that we're interested in learning from. So I will not hold this any longer. We will bring out our first speaker.
Mrs. Johnny Mae Perry, who is the CEO of the Gifford Historical Museum and Culture Center, is here tonight to read the proclamation and tell us a little bit more about this important event.
Good evening. We would like to thank the superintendent, the school board members, for this prestigious honor. On behalf of the Gifford Historical Museum and Culture Center and the Gifford community, we want to thank you for this proclamation. As we tell the storied past of Gifford High School, we are proud to have been a Gifford Tiger. Many students from the early days of Gifford High School returned to Gifford out of love and dedication and taught at Gifford Elementary and Gifford High School, such as Dr. Eddie Hudson, who is with us this evening, Mr. Garfey Gibson, Mr. Scott Perry, Dr. A. Ronald Hudson, Ms. Catherine Washington, the late Bernice Brostston Johnson, and the late Pam Perry, just to name a few. Gifford High School represented dignity, culture, and pride for the Gifford community. It was the heart of Gifford, and that heart is still beating today within each one of us. Thank you.
And Mrs. Johnny Mae, I'm sorry, I scared her. She's not reading the proclamation. Dr. Peggy Jones is reading the proclamation, so Dr. Jones?
It's so nice to see so many familiar faces. Before I read the proclamation, I just wanted to say I attended this event on Saturday with Dr. Schiff, Dr. Moore, and Mr. Seymour. It was the dedication of the first Gifford school in Hosee Schuman Park. A historical marker was placed there just this past Saturday. I was also the principal of Gifford Middle Sixth in its last three years of existence and proudly opened Gifford Middle School along with a great middle school faculty in 1995. Proclamation designating June 19, 2021, as Gifford School Hosee Schuman Park Historical Marker Dedication Day. Whereas in 1901, William Edward Jeffrey purchased 80 acres of land in Gifford and donated a portion for the construction of a black school where none existed. Whereas the new school, Gifford School, first served students in first through sixth grade until 1938. Whereas in 1938, Gifford School was expanded to include high school students due to collaboration with the Julius Rosenwald Foundation, St. Lucie County, and the citizens of Gifford, as until that time, black high school students were required to travel to Fort Pierce to attend high school. Whereas in 1952, the Indian River County School Board funded the construction of a new high school named the Gifford High School. Whereas, following integration in 1969, Gifford High School became a middle school, now known as Gifford Middle School. Whereas the historical and philosophical importance of the creation of black schools in Gifford where none existed is memorialized by a historic marker. And whereas the school district of Indian River County recognizes the importance, impact, and relevance of events of the past in our community and is dedicated to serving all students with a quality education. Now therefore be proclaimed by the School Board of Indian River County, Florida, that June 19, 2021, shall be designated as Gifford School Hosee Schuman Park Historic Marker Dedication Day, a day to remember and honor the past and a day to recommit to the vision and goals of the school district of Indian River County to be best by kids, transforming education to inspire and empower all students to maximize their full potential. Adopted this 22nd day of June, 2021, School Board of Indian River County and David Moore, Superintendent. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Jones. And before we Kristin ushers everyone up here to have a picture, I would be honored if any of the great people who are amongst us would like to provide a few remarks.
I should have brought my box. Thank you for having us this evening. I am the county historian, and we are in the midst of history right now. But there are many stories about history of the past. And what is important that we take those stories, we bring them to the present, and we learn for the future. Historians call that connections. On Saturday, we heard stories of the generosity of a black man and given his land for a school. We heard the commitment of a white man, Julius Rosenwald, whose foundation funded schools for black students all over the South. And also the commitment of a very small community, Gifford, who had to provide funds as a cost share for that school. They did it. They built that school, and we had a number of our students, as Johnny had said, that came back and served other students. So they came from the past to the present, and these students are going into the future. Decades later, when the site and the abandoned school fell into hard times, a large corporation, Guff Western in Felsmere, purchased the school and the site, and they did it for a public park to honor one of their employees, a very loyal employee, Hosee Schuman. So that's come full circle, and these commitments and these connections exist today. The state of Florida, on Saturday, bestowed one of their honors on this little site, and that is a Florida historical landmark, and that will be there forever. Thank you.
I just want to mention that the county historian is not a paid position. So Ruth is volunteering, and if you have the opportunity for her to take you around the museums, put your tennis shoes on, lace them up, she's going to move quick.
I was appointed 21 years ago, so we're long live.
Good evening. I'm Catherine Washington. Many of you may know me, but I am a 1964 graduate of Gifford High School. I was also a teacher. I came back and taught one semester before entering into Vera Beach High School as a home economics teacher back in 1967. But tonight, my remarks will come from something that is very dear to all of the Gifford nation, and that's our alma mater. Oh, Gifford High has stood the test. It is the very best. It has struggled hard to win its name, and now it's not a shame. And now it's not a shame, my friend. And now it's not a shame. It has struggled hard to win its name, and now it's not a shame. It was started long ago, my friend, with a few and honest men. These men knew that they were sure to win if their hearts were free from sin. If their hearts were free from sin, my friend. If their hearts were free from sin. These men knew that they were sure to win if their hearts were free from sin. We pledged ourselves to do our best. We are sure to stand the test. We boys and girls will always strive to make school and community one. To make school and community one, my friend. To make school and community one. We boys and girls will always strive to make school and community one. And this was written. Mr. Merrill Russ, Vice President of the Class of 1951, verse 1; Raymond Jackson, President of the Class of 1951, verse 2; and verse 3, the writer is unknown. But isn't it beautiful? Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Anthony Brown. Today, I'm truly proud, honored, and hopeful of our future. As I said on Saturday, I'll repeat, black history, lost, stolen, forgotten, and oftentimes altered. It is important that our children, our community, and our people know who we are, where we came from, and our struggles. From the dirt of Gifford, Florida, came many monumental people. Many people, we had generals, we had PhDs. We had all of these people who evolved from a school that was never wanted to be. Dr. Hudson said on Saturday, he had to quit school for three years in order to work. Dr. Hudson, Eddie would probably tell you how we went... they went three months or four months, but they were determined to educate themselves and be educated and be a positive force in our community. As you step forward from this day, I'm honored that the proclamation was given. I'm honored that it's not a historical society, a historical site. But I pledge all of you to realize, we cannot bury the past. It is relevant for the future. We cannot bury the past. We cannot bury the past. If we bury the past, it's to say that all of these people are irrelevant. It's to say our deeds, our actions, our struggle has been for naught. It's to say that our struggle never occurred. So as you go forth as a district, to deny any child the true history is to deny all children. Our children are strong enough, they are intelligent enough, to decipher this stuff and understand what is relevant and needed. As our close is saying, Frederick Douglass said, "A man cannot have a future if he does not have a understanding his past." Thank you, Dr. Moore. Thank you, School Board. We truly appreciate you.
Good afternoon. My name is Joe Adellet III. I'm here for my father, Joe Van Adel Jr., who was a School Board member for 20 years. He's a 1957 graduate of Gifford High School. And a couple of little quick things. As we travel, we see how the railroad tracks are blocked by the trains. My dad and mother tells me the story of the train blocked them. They had to crawl up under the train to get on the other side of the road to make it to school. So that's been a part of, a problem in our community a long time, but that was a part of their story. All right. My dad, Gifford High School was, did not have a football program. I'm going to just hit this. And they started it while my dad was in school. He was a 57 graduate, as I said. He told me that when they first started the program, they asked Vero Beach for some equipment, and Vero Beach did send some equipment to help them out. But he said when they, that first year, because they didn't understand the game, he said they got beat pretty good. But he said, but he said as Tigers, they matured, and they, and they, he said that next year, all those whippings that they took, they gave them back.
Good evening. I'm Eddie Hudson. I don't know whether I'm eligible enough to pinch hit for my brother Ron, but I'll do the best I can. My family was born, all of my brothers and sisters were born in Tallahassee. Well, we were out in the boonies, as they say, in Tallah, excuse me, Tallahassee. And my mother was pushing my father to get us out so we could get a better education. And in 1943, the first time I ever left the city of Tallahassee was to get on a train to come to Indian River County, where I've been now for more than 75 years. When it was time for me to go to school, because we had US-1, that was the main thoroughfare from, and especially from the north going to the south, Miami and other areas in that vicinity, it was very difficult for us small kids to cross US-1. So my mu, I didn't know it then, but my mother kept me out for that year until I got big enough that I could cross US-1 by myself. I started first grade in 1945 and graduated from Gifford High School in 1957. And there was one of my teachers who was so gracious, took me to St. Augustine after I graduated, and I had an audience with the president of the college. It was, at the time, was Florida Normal College in St. Augustine, and that's where I got my bachelor's degree. My first job was back at the school that I had graduated, and I taught fifth graders. And I can go on and on and on, but I know the time is short. But I had a wonderful, wonderful time going to Gifford High School, and it really made me feel good to come back so that I could teach, or work, teach. I am reminded of President Abraham Lincoln when he said that he will work hard and study now, that he'll be prepared for an opportunity to come. And E. Caleb Mills also said, "I really want to aspire as well as inspire." Thank you, board members and superintendent, for what you've done for Gifford High School.
Good evening. Good evening. Thank you. I'm Curtis Edward Johnson, Jr. I currently am the sitting City Commissioner of the City of Fort Pierce, Mayor Pro Tem of the City of Fort Pierce. Dr. Moore, it's a pleasure to be here. I am probably the youngest with Tiger blood running through the veins because I am the grandson of Ernest Jeffrey. My mother was his daughter, who was an educator in St. Lucie County for 33 years. My grandfather valued education. As I looked through the area of Gifford and looked through the city of Vero Beach, it was well-known, his generosity to donate for education. There are two placards in this county that bear his name based on his donation and belief in education. I had my grandfather in my life until 1983, when he passed. I was a junior in high school. Yes, I was a junior in high school. He was born in the 1800s. I was a blessing that came along a little later in my parents' life, but I'm glad that I did. Because I'm the start of that history, making sure we get it right. And what's being done here tonight and what has been done this weekend is getting it right so that the stories are being told, they're being recorded, and it's being factual. And I can't thank you enough for telling that. I know my grandfather is smiling down. He's buried just up the street here, not too far from here. And I know he's smiling, and I know my mom's smiling. I've got my cousins here, and we are so proud, on behalf of the Jeffrey family, Johnson family, to be here to see this moment, and we can't thank you enough. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Freddie Woolfork, lifelong resident of Indian River County. You know, when I was growing up here in Gifford, I knew one thing about the Lower End of Gifford, where the school was located, and that Mr. Jeffrey had the best Hayden mangoes in town. Still do. My wife is from that area, and she was born and raised in the Lower End of Gifford, and she used to tell me stories about how if she sweep his porch and do some dishes for him, she can get those Hayden mangoes. So I have a big investment down there. But it seems to me that I came along a year or two late when things were happening. And what I mean by that, I didn't attend the school on the Lower End of Gifford. 1951, I was born. 1952, the school was built across the strike, so I missed all of that great history over there. One thing about it, I felt that the Tiger growl reached from over there by the hospital all the way over where Gifford High School is today, and it's still growling. Cat said a piece of, Ms. Washington said a piece of the song. And now I'm not ashamed, my friend. And now I'm not ashamed. We have struggled hard to win its name, and now I'm not ashamed. And I'm not ashamed because I didn't get the opportunity to become a Tiger graduate. 1969, the year I was going to be a senior Tiger, they cut my growl off. And I had to become a woo-hoo. But I'll never forget, I'll never forget that Tiger growl that Mr. Horsken and sort of, Mr. Dr. Hunter and others, Dr. Hudson, they said, "Boy, you can get an education in a tent. You don't have to be in a building." And that inspired me not to give up because I would not be a graduate in 1970 at Gifford High School. It also inspired me, when I worked so hard that junior year, to send the seniors to Washington DC selling candy, washing cars, and guess what? I won't get a chance to go! I could have became very bitter, quit school, but I remembered that Tiger growl. And now I'm not ashamed, my friend. And now I'm not ashamed. We have struggled hard to win our name, and now we're not ashamed. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Dr. Moore and members of the board. My name is James Broxton, Jr. I'm the son of James Broxton, Sr., who was a 1960 graduate and alumni of Gifford High School and a veteran of the US Army. We're relatives of Mr. John Broxton, who took it upon himself to transport black students to Lincoln Park Academy in Fort Pierce due to the lack of educational options for blacks in Indian River County during that time. My father continued to transport students for the Indian River County School District in the 70s, when he drove the bus during the early stages of integration. The legacy of Broxton's being a part of transporting students in our area continued as Donald Broxton, Jr. drove the Indian River County, I mean, Indian River Community College school bus, and he transported students from Felsmere all over Indian River County to Fort Pierce so that they could get higher education. When he got ready to go into the Army, the mantle fell on me to do that same job, so I did that as well. I'm currently serving as a teacher in Indian River County today because of the sacrifices and the dedication of the Gifford Tigers and everybody that was a part of making that happen. And I don't take that for granted. I don't take it lightly. My opportunities in education, I have a master's in business administration. I could have not been there if the chance to go to school was not there for my mom and my dad. So today, I stand before you grateful. I stand before you acknowledging the fact that you can cripple a person by taking education from them, and I want to thank this county for acknowledging the fact that education is important to all people. Thank you.
Thank you. And I was disappointed that Mr. Gibson couldn't be here tonight because he was my principal at BBE, so if someone could tell him that Kristin Dees said hi, I would appreciate that. That concludes our presentations for tonight. Oh, well, we're going to take a picture, yes, but that's the end of the presentations, and if everyone would please come up here in front of the dais, we want to take a large group photo.
She doesn't have any here. She doesn't have anything. Okay. We just voted on the proclamation. Okay. All right, board members, I need a motion.
I'm moved that we approved the proclamation designating, I'm going to say it wrong, too, Gifford School and Hosee Park, a historical site.
Okay, thank you. All in favor? Aye.
Are we going to fit everybody? Can they come up? Can they come up? Kristin, can they come up?
Thank you. We're not really touching, but well.
Thank you, Freddie. Thank you for speaking.
Thank you for being here.
Thank you all for coming.
So here, as you walk out, here is the proclamation, and what we'd like to do is take a picture from today and frame it in a nice piece of wood and send it over so we can put it up. But we all have signed it, and it's ready to go.
And just for the record, it was a 5-0 vote.
Perfect, so I will get it over to you. Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for being here.
And Madam Chair, that does conclude our presentation.
Where is the proclamation going to go? In the historical society?
We have two, one in the historical society, which is across from Gifford, and then one in the school.
I believe that's yours. Thank you for being here.
I wanted to use that one. I know. It's like, somebody please like.
Thank you. Can we close that door back there? Yeah, thank you. All right, now it is time for the citizen input, and I appreciate the presentations. Thank you, Dr. Moore. All right, these are the guidelines for citizen input according to our School Board policy 0169.1. Each statement made by a member of the public shall be limited to three minutes in duration. Persons will be recognized in the order in which the requests were received. The time shall start when the speaker is at the podium, and the School Board attorney will be the official timekeeper. You will hear a beep at the end of your three minutes. Persons may speak for up to three minutes at the beginning of the business meeting during citizen input as indicated in the order of business, and for up to three minutes to each action item during the action agenda and each board member discussion item as indicated on the order of business. Persons may only speak once about a given item. The time period may be extended by the presiding officer. Only the individual submitting the speaker's form is allowed to address the board. Time may not be yielded to other speakers. During the meeting, please refrain from clapping or outbursts of any sort so that we can proceed with dignity and with decorum by not infringing on anyone's individual First Amendment rights. I need to remind everyone to direct all comments to the vice chair, who's running the meeting tonight, not to individual board members or to the superintendent. Board members may or may not address any citizen inputs, statements at the end of the citizen input comments. As board members listen to citizens without interruption, citizens are asked to give board members the same respect. As per Florida statute 1001.372, subsection 3, the presiding officer of any district school board may order the removal from a public meeting held by the district school board of any person interfering with the expeditious or orderly process of such meeting, provided such officer has first issued a warning, and continued interference with the orderly processes of the meeting will result in that removal. I'll call you up in the order for which the forms were submitted, and I'll call the first speaker first, and the next speaker will be on deck at the back of the room. So I'll call two people at the same time. So first speaker will be Joseph Parr, the second speaker will be Mary Zerby. Mr. Parr? And can you also call Mrs. Zerby? Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening. So in the last meeting, we, the Parents for Equality, the group that I'm in, were pretty much accused of pushing a communist Marxist agenda. And I'm getting really tired of having to deal with these types of attacks. I'm just a person who fights for justice. The accusation that we have some sort of hidden agenda to institute communism in our school district, it's completely false. Look, Parents for Equality, it's a group of people with diverse political ideologies. Could there be people that are literal communists in our group? Absolutely. There are also Republicans, Libertarians, Democrats- There are also Republicans, Libertarians, Democrats, and people that don't have mainstream political ideologies in our group. But what we are fighting for does not fit within a single political ideology. We aren't beholden to Democrats, Republicans, big donors like the Koch Brothers or George Soros, special interest groups, et cetera. The thing that we all share in common is that we all fight for justice. And what we've also heard from some within Moms for Liberty and such and other organizations is that the terms diversity, equity, and inclusion are code words for communism and Marxism. Now, I go to a university where we have what's called the Office of Diversity and Inclusion, something that is very common amongst colleges. And the people that I know who have worked for and/or with them are some of the most compassionate, most anti-racist people I've ever met. And the director of it is someone who is massively respected by me and so many of my peers and the person who mentored me in my first year of college and is one of my best friends interned for them. And to say that they are the actual racists, to say that they have this hidden agenda to promote communism, it's a deception of the highest magnitude. And honestly, it's hurtful. Diversity, equity, and inclusion aren't euphemisms or code words. They are words and practices that we live by because they are the right and just things to do. When I said in my speech last meeting that I wish that everyone had teachers like Ms. Walton and Dr. Carrigan, I truly meant it. Now, some here may think that I may have just been indoctrinated with leftist or communist ideology, and that's just not true. Dr. Carrigan's class, for instance, was completely fact-based. And pretty much every single class she would provide us with texts of government policies and historical documents that prove systemic injustices exist. Maybe if everyone had a Dr. Carrigan, there would not be so many people fighting to keep unjust systems in place. Maybe more people would care for more than just themselves because people are actually being harmed by these systems, people I care about. And the fact that there are people here that fight for this unjust status quo, I take that personally. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. All right, we have, next up is Mary Zerby, and on deck is Angela Love. Nancy could get Angela. Oh, she's here. Thank you.
Dr. Moore, members of the board. My name is Mary Zerby. I have a 12-year-old in the school district. She's been here her whole life. Being uncomfortable is a necessary part of unlearning oppressive behaviors. One of the most popular misconceptions about black history is that over time, Americans have gradually become less racist. That's not true. The first enslaved did not arrive in 1619. They were just the first to arrive in the English colonies. Nearly a century earlier, in 1526, 600 Europeans founded the colony of San Miguel de Guadalupe in what is now Georgetown, South Carolina. They brought enslaved Africans who revolted almost immediately on arrival. The First Slave Rebellion predates the Mayflower by almost a century. Another notion is that American slavery was like British slavery. But America's race-based slavery was quite different. Great Britain never codified slavery into their laws. While it was not illegal, it was never ensconced into their constitution. And British slave trade was not exclusively race-based like America. Brits had enslaved people of every color, buying slaves from the Barbary Pirates who enslaved peoples from Europe, the Middle East, Northern Africa, and Asia. When the "twenty and odd Negroes," in quotes, arrived in America, there were some indentured servants already here. But the twice-stolen Africans who came here couldn't not speak the language or read or write. So instead of being treated like indentured servants providing free labor, white Virginians changed the game. The Africans got no contractual periods of servitude. These new brands of white people were like, "Freedom? We don't do that over here." Then in 1640, an enslaved African ran away along with two European indentured servants. A Virginia court sentenced them to 30 lashes, extending the white man's period of servitude by one year. The black man was given a very different sentence. Quote, "And that the third being a Negro named John Punch shall serve his said master or his assins for the time of his natural life, here or elsewhere." In 1642, the Virginia legislature declared the children of enslaved black women could also be enslaved. In South Carolina in 1739, a group of enslaved Congo soldiers formed an army and began marching. As they marched, led by a literate black man named Jimmy, they burned six plantations, killing two dozen whites. The Stono Rebellion scared so many South Carolinians, they passed the Negro Act of 1740. The Act forbids slaves gathering in one place, growing food, and learning to read. States across the South passed similar laws. They required communities to patrol for runaway slaves. South Carolina had created one of the nation's first slave patrols in 1704. This time, they made it mandatory. In 1757, Georgia followed suit. In 1792, Georgia even prohibited slaves from worshiping God. Those slave patrol roles were the base of state militias that later fought in the revolution. Now y'all like to go on all night? It's important. The truth will set all of us free. And I want my daughter and all of our children to learn real history, American history.
Thank you for your comments. Angela Love is next. And then Grace Olson is on deck.
I want to apologize for coming off harshly in the last meeting. I have very strong feelings towards this issue of fighting racism and inequalities. And I let those feelings rule my words last time. I love the quote, "Be the change you wish to see in the world." And I want our world to be more civil and peaceful. So I should be civil. I want our world to be welcoming to all, so I should be welcoming. I want us to learn from each other, so I will start learning myself. I've realized that we are all here because we care about our children, every one of us. We have something in common. We care about our community enough to come out here tonight. We are all doing our best to survive, pay our bills, teach our kids, and build a better world. I have had a long journey to where I'm at today to start unlearning the racism my grandpa taught me, the media has taught me, our society has taught me. I have made many mistakes. I have so much more to learn and will keep reading, learning, and trying to do better as I learn more. I am human, as are you. We have diversity here in this room. Republicans, Democrats, liberals, conservatives, white, black, brown, hetero, homo, bisexuals. We are all in this school district together. We need to be examples for our children of how to work together with people that are different than us. We do work well together after local tragedies. We pull together after hurricanes. So we should be able to come together and work on this as well. I've brought some questions we could all ask of ourselves. When was the last time I was in the minority race of the room? How do I build bridges against, across race and cultures and people different than for me? What can I learn from them? Am I afraid or uncomfortable with change? Why? When was the last time I had a caring, thoughtful discussion with someone who is across the political aisle? Are my close friendships diverse? Or have I self-segregated to only be around people more like me, hearing only voices that echo my own opinion? Did I ever ask someone questions about their race as if they were a spokesperson for all other members? Did I ever act overly friendly to a person of another race to make sure I didn't seem biased? When was the last time I was pulled over by the police? Was I afraid they would shoot me because of my skin color? How do I respond when someone around me makes a racist comment? Can our black and brown students have more teachers that look like them, more role models, more mentors? Let's not waste more of the school board's time with bogus fears about Marxism. They have so many projects and things to coordinate. Let them do the job of educating our children about this complex world we live in, how we got here, and how we're going to make it out together, all of us, together.
Thank you for your comments. Grace Olson is next. Laura Torres is on deck. Welcome.
Hello. I am here today to show my support for those who value equality and value teaching their children about equality. What we have seen from the great majority of people coming to speak at these meetings has been bullying and inappropriate comments to those fighting for greater equality in the school system. At the meeting on June 8th, many people spoke out saying that there is no need to teach children about race or move towards a more inclusive education due to the fact that there are already plenty of successful black people in our society already. This is exactly why we do need to teach about race and its role in our world and to create a more inclusive education. The concept and definitions of race and racism are not quite as simple and binary of a concept as many people think. Race is an arbitrary social construct that is not supported by science but is used in society to create unjust hierarchies and systems. Racism is a manifestation of discrimination and legal authority and institutional control shown through various ideologies and social penalties. These definitions and concepts of race and racism make it easier to understand that there are still disparities that are present that may be hard for some privileged people to see, yet actively and consistently diminish in varying degrees the quality of life for people of color and other people without privilege. Thus, white people sitting complacently hold these violent systems, and we can only escape our complacency by actively being anti-racist. That starts in the classroom. It is simply not a true statement to say that each and every child will be granted the same opportunities and can each achieve their goals in the same exact way. They are each different. They are each unique. And they each face their own set of obstacles trying to achieve these same goals. These obstacles are systems of oppression that automatically place certain groups of students behind in this journey to achieve their goals. The same opportunities for each student can only truly be attained if each student is treated in an equitable way as opposed to being treated in the same way as their privileged counterparts. As a student who attended all 13 years of primary education through the Indian River County School District and graduated just two years ago, I can speak from the perspective of someone that this curriculum would actually impact and say that I am embarrassed and ashamed to have only learned the whitewashed version of history and had to teach myself about the various systems of oppression that are constantly being upheld in our society. The beginning of positive change starts with knowledge, which is exactly why I would hope to see a drastic change towards a more inclusive and truthful curriculum in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next up is Laura Torres. And then Kelly Koch is next. Coach Koch.
Hello.
Hello.
I believe you were asked to do the impossible this year. And we've asked administrators to do the impossible, teachers to do the impossible, support staff to do the impossible, to follow CDC guidelines and open up schools without the needed resources to make things safe for students, for themselves. We asked teachers to go back to school before they were ready, to juggle in-person schooling with online schooling, to navigate quarantines and absences. You are probably at your breaking point. But you've done a great job, and I'm grateful. Just as we started to see a light at the end of the tunnel, you now have to sit through a bunch of parents talking about critical race theory. It seems like most of the people that come up here wanting to ban critical race theory don't even know what it is. They just don't want students to engage with the concept of racism. I've heard many parents, and even a council member, speak about critical race theory in ways that are intellectually dishonest. Maybe a simplistic way to define it is, "History has consequences." It's an advanced theory that you might use in legal or academic settings. And talking about it in a public education setting is like me coming up here and protesting against teaching advanced calculus in third grade. There are layers to this absurdity, aren't there? Because you can't remove something that isn't there to begin with. So I find this unproductive. And what I'd like to offer is this. We must accept that we inherently all come to the table with our own bias, based on where we're from, how we are raised, what our own lived experiences are. It's a fact that if we grow up in a society where racist ideas are all around us, it's almost impossible that we wouldn't absorb some of them. As humans, we are terrible at evaluating our own bias. The good news is, once we recognize that, every one of us has the ability to think about it and try to push back against these internalized ideas. It shouldn't be controversial to admit this and commit to correcting the blind spots we find. There's nothing political about correcting false information or criticizing those who knowingly spread it. There are going to be a whole host of issues that we need to give oxygen to next year, continuing public health measures, catching up students after an irregular year, meeting special education students' needs. My ask to you is, can you commit to centering real issues like these? Thank you.
Thank you for coming. Okay. Is it Keely? And the last name's?
Koch.
I did say it right. Okay, Koch, thank you. And Chris Allen is on deck. Thank you.
Good evening, community members. You have nothing to fear in this county or state. The hands of your board members and your educators have all been tied and bound. Your antiquated way of life will be preserved in Florida. Critical race theory as a topic or any associated or adjacent topics have all been banned by your governor. You can all breathe easy. What is happening here is actually called dog whistling. And community members such as Miss Justice are getting exactly what they want from you. You are significantly up in arms about a non-existent issue, something of no consequence to your children's daily education, while completely missing the fact that no one is actually attempting to enlighten your children about this country's violent and ever-present history of racism. You are being led down a dark and divisive road, and your children and their education are being used in a much more sinister way than I think you may ever realize. What you seem to fear the most, the brainwashing of your kids, is literally what you are allowing to happen to yourselves. There is no longer time to ignore the history of our country, nor is there time to waste debating whether systemic racism is real. There is only time for educating yourselves and your children about what systemic racism is and how we all, as white people, benefit from the foundation of white supremacy and racism that this beautiful land is actually founded on. Acknowledging systemic racism is not saying there are a lot of racists in the system. It simply asks that we begin to understand and ultimately correct the fact that if there were no racists in the systems, those being our judicial, economic, and education systems, that those systems would all still harm black people and people of color disproportionately. It does not mean we are all horrible people, but we must acknowledge that the game is rigged in our favor in many ways based on the color of our white skin, that even if we were poor, abused, neglected, and have suffered, that the act of being born white keeps us safer and gives us greater access to opportunities and the ability to bounce back. I can say this to you as a white woman that has been an abuse survivor, survived homelessness, sex trafficked as a teen, and has lost everything at least twice as an adult due to major illness or most recently a pandemic. Speaking about, speaking about or educating our kids on what a privilege it is to have always has been to be white in America is not as scary as you think it is. It is possible to do with fearless and gentle honesty. Growth is possible. Change is possible, but fear is not going to get you anywhere but on the wrong side of history. I challenge you to stop being so triggered by buzzwords and start investing the energy of divesting from your own inherent racism and growing from the lessons that we have learned from history and breaking a vicious and malicious cycle. If you did not see your black community members up here and feel something, you're missing the point. Thank you.
Thank you. Chris Allen is next, and Rick Allen is on deck.
Hi, I'm here, I listened to the 1:00 PM meeting from earlier today, and since I can't point one of you out, I'll just say this to all of you. How can you say that our opinion as community members and parents mean nothing? This curriculum directly affects us for five years. So because I'm not some person in Tallahassee, you just expect me to stay quiet? You don't want to hear from the Plevians? Then why have the curriculum out for parents in the community to review? You imply that we shouldn't even submit petitions, and you won't listen because the community is not more expert than those in Tallahassee. What type of elitist attitude is this? It's your constitutional duty and responsibility to select and provide adequate instructional material for all students. This is written in the statute. It's not the DOE. You would do parent a disservice to purchase the HMH. I was told that by choosing the DOE-approved curriculum, you save roughly $10 per student. Has there been an appropriate cost analysis to compare the prices? I'd like to talk about a few stories mentioned in the HMH curriculum. Kindergartners are expected to do opinion writings, and these are five-to-six-year-olds. They're barely learning sight words at this age. How is this age appropriate? Telling a five-year-old to write an opinion to convince someone to agree with you is an advanced concept. My seven-year-old can barely write one sentence about what they just read. Kindergartners are told not to assume that everything the author says is true or correct in a nonfiction book. They're instructed to question facts in an informational book. In the fourth grade, there is a story called "Yes, We Are Latinos." It shows a map without borders spanning from Canada to Central America. The same story has racist elements in it. A Hispanic child is called Taco and was previously referred to as No Way Jose. Students ask him if tacos contain dog meat. The teacher, who is a white male, asks the student to rename himself to blend in. This story, if anything, will give children ideas to bully instead of helping see what the main story is about. Another story is "My Name is Lily." It shows racism towards a girl who's Chinese but speaks Spanish. People in the story say, "For you Chinese people, learning languages must be easy." A fictional story talks about a family who consider themselves to be economic and political refugees. It talks about green cards and border issues. How is this age appropriate? Why not a story about legal immigration? In the 2021 IFE Quick Conferences, Benita Flucker, who is the Senior VP of Shared Services at HMH, said that the concepts of cultural responsive teaching is just one part of the whole approach for the student, that they also plan to incorporate critical wellness, which includes a pedagogy of critical race theory, as well as student wellness. She said that the mystery of these will be in...
Thank you for your comments. Mr. Allen, and Lamar Nodjakamo is on deck.
Hello, I'm Rick Allen.
Hello.
And I watched the meeting you had this afternoon, and I know you saw that video. You saw, Ms. Rosario showed it, and you saw what was talked about, and the response from Mr. Meyer was that those comments are not found in this material. Well, you won't find those comments. What you're going to find are the concepts, the constructs, the methodologies that make up those structures. They're all throughout the material. Our screening parents that we had that screened those books found them and brought those to the attorney on Friday for his hearing. And what he told us, there were a list of six statutes that were on, that we had to fall within, or whatever. He said, "Oh, no, I can't do all six. I can only do two. So if it's outside of these two, I can't hear it. You can talk about it, but it's not going to have any impact." So what's the disconnect there? That doesn't seem to make sense. But again, you're not going to hear the words "critical race theory." You're not going to hear specific things to say, call this out, that this is critical race theory. You're going to see the concepts, you're going to see the ideologies, you're going to see that throughout, and that's what was demonstrated Friday. It's a shame that your own attorney wouldn't let you guys participate in that, because I think there's a lot of information that you're missing. You're missing out on. So I would urge you to hold off, pause your vote. Let's see if Amplify gets approved on Friday, and if not, there is an option. You can go and not use one of the board-approved or the DOE-approved. You can do that. Other school districts are doing that. You can do that. You may lose some funding, but you have that option. It's up to you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Allen. Ms. Nodjakamo is next, and Stanford Erickson is after that. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to read fast. Lamar Nodjakamo. "As a parent and grandparent, stakeholder, and taxpaying citizen of Indian River County, I wish to state unequivocally that all children, regardless of race, creed, ethnicity, zip code, or skin color, deserve to be treated with respect and deserve the highest quality academic instruction available without political bias or racially charged indoctrination. After studying both the curriculum and the instructional materials with as much time as I was able to devote to the project, I and many members of the community decided that HMH does not meet the high standards without political bias that our children deserve. That is why I was one of the petitioners in opposition to Houghton-Mifflin-Harcourt curriculum. Mr. Meyer said in the hearing on Friday that we petitioners did not spend enough time studying the actual curriculum, while Mr. Barefoot is quoting in the Verro News as saying that we are over-reading and overinterpreting, and sometimes I think they have a little too much time on their hands and they're looking for stuff that's not there. The objective attorney spent quite a bit of time on his phone during our testimony with a few strokes of his pen, said that we failed to prove our case against HMH. Those are just a few examples of many in which we are politely denigrated and marginalized by the elite members of the school board, both elected and appointed. Yet we, the public, are expected to act with absolute decorum. We are not attorneys nor educational experts, but we do know how to read. We did spend many hours as volunteers scanning through portions of the instructional materials which fall under the Florida statutes regarding the governor's declaration that we will not have CRT in our schools. We did not study just the curriculum, but we did find plenty of concerns. The overall tone of the instructional materials is politically and racially divisive, as well as extremely negative. We gave specific examples of this to the attorney presented in with our reports documenting page numbers to no avail. I hear a lot of talk about stakeholders in these discussions, but the most important stakeholders are parents, their children, taxpayers, and the community. The entire county, country, is in an uproar over critical race theory, yet certain members of the board have implied that we don't know what we're talking about, that we are misinformed. At the May 11th school board meeting, Jacqueline Rosario mentioned that Governor DeSantis mandated that all materials, including teaching materials, must be free of critical race theory. She goes on to quote Governor DeSantis as saying, "A moratorium must immediately be declared to stop all sixty-seven counties from purchasing materials that embrace critical race theory, the sixteen-nineteen Project and BLM Marxist materials," around the three-hour, ten-minute mark. If there's no critical race theory in our instructional materials, then why did our own school board superintendent, Dr. Moore, at the same meeting, May 11th, reject Jackie's proposal to extend a moratorium on adopting any curriculum containing CRT and acknowledge publicly that CRT is embedded throughout our children's curriculum? Around three hours and thirteen minutes, Mr. Moore said the following. "You're right, Mrs. Rosario, the same tentacles of critical race theory will be present in Amplify as it is in HMH." And the definition of what critical race theory is, is do we need to have that conversation? Does Mr. Moore have a different definition of critical race theory than Governor DeSantis? How many definitions are there? This reminds me of President Clinton's statement when on the witness stand. It depends on what the definition of is is. "The entire nation, both black and white Americans, are showing up at school board meetings to express their concern about critical race theory."
Thank you.
This is not a black or white issue. Black and white are both.
Thank you. All right. Stanford Erickson, and after that Susan Aguirre. Hi, Mr. Erickson.
Chairman Barefoot, and members of the board, Superintendent Dr. Moore. April 4th, nineteen sixty-eight, Reverend King was assassinated. That night, I wrote a poem. "My friend was killed the other day, a bullet struck his life away. His heart stopped and his blood turned gold. He was but thirty-nine years old. He had gone down to Memphis, Tennessee to lead a march upholding hume dignity. He had done this many times before. He was quite aware of what could be in store. Bombs had torn his home apart. Men and media had turned him an upstart. He'd been spit upon and hit. Those he helped called him a hypocrite. He believed in militant nonviolence. A warm smile and hand were his defense. Where others fought and ran, he walked. Where others yelled and screamed, he talked. All he thought, try to be good. Most seek after brotherhood. Then he said, when they called him the unword, this he thought when they pulled the trigger. He was a short, black gentleman, what some called Negro and others African-American. But oh, he was so much, so much more. He was a higherlights troubadour. But that's not all there is to say. No bullet can strike this man away. Martin Luther King Jr. will always live, as long as even one of us is willing to forgive." I wrote that because I lived in the ghetto in the Fillmore District in San Francisco for seven years, and the Nation of Islam was there, and the Black Panthers were there, and they thought Dr. Tom was an Uncle Tom. They thought Dr. Martin King was an Uncle Tom. And we have these militants today that think the same thing about anybody who wants to approach this in a nice approach away with, approachable way with our children. Our children do not need to use racism to teach racism. And that's what the HMA said. It's racism to teach racism. That's not what is necessary. I appreciate, this is a vote that you have, it would be nice if you could delay it and look at something else. I appreciate all the effort that you put in, your public servants. I appreciate the education you have. Please, consider, don't use racism against racism. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Erickson. Okay. Ms. Aguirre, and on deck will be P. Norman Grant. Yes. Is Susan Aguirre here?
Hello, good evening. I'm short, sorry. All right. I think it's on. All right. Well, good evening, board members, superintendent. My name is Susan Aguirre. Thank you for having me. I want to start off by thanking you primarily because I know that your job is very difficult. As public servants of our county, we look to you, we look for you for guidance for our children, for our families, because they are your constituents. I'm not here just to speak primarily about my own experiences, but also of those, because I am also an outreach leader for my local church. And I often look and see so many children from different creeds, different backgrounds, and oftentimes outreach means I'm looking at children from all different walks of life. Walks of life that they didn't necessarily choose, but they were put in. Walks of life that mean what their future will hold and what it'll be for them. And so during that time in our community, I have two children, I have three children, two of which are very distinctly different, sewn of the same thread, one very white and one very brown, and it's obvious. And I love their differences, and everyone says, "Well, gee whiz, they're so different." Yes, they are. I love them. And with those differences, one day, a little boy said to my daughter, a Spanish boy said to my daughter, who happens to have blond hair and blue eyes, "You didn't get that ball from me because you're racist." And that hurt me. That broke me. I don't teach my children to look at each other through color. I never do, and I never will. And it always is based on the content of their character. And so when we look at equity, equity really means redistribution. And I looked at that boy, and I looked at Isabella, and I said, "What are you going to say?" She said, "I'm Spanish, too." He said, "Well, you don't look Spanish." She replied, "What does Spanish look like?" And I thought that was the best token answer I'd ever heard in my life, because I grew up in the projects in Queens, New York. I was the white girl. I was alienated, and I was too white to go to school in Brooklyn, Bushwick, Knickerbocker and Myrtle. I won't forget it. I hung out with a lot of people I probably shouldn't have hung out with, but that taught me a lot. That taught me a lot of the things that I wanted to see and didn't want to see and be around. And I'll tell you what, the redistribution of suffering is oppressive in itself, and that's what CRT is in my eyes, because my mother is an immigrant. She is the American dream. My mother brought to this country with twenty-five bucks in her pocket, slept in Central Park, and she promised me one thing, that I was going to be whatever I wanted to be through the mercy and grace of her hard work. Her hard work put me here. It wasn't because someone said she was Spanish and couldn't do it. She did it because she could and she knew and she wanted to. It wasn't because of the color of my mother's skin, it was because of education. In the very beginning of this board meeting, everyone, speaking about Gifford, all of them referenced education, that it was afforded to them in Gifford, and I thought, and it moved me, at some point, it was given to them, and they hung on to it because they knew that that meant the difference. Educating our children is important, and I do believe that, but I also believe... Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments. P. Norman Grant is next, and then Ariel Garretts is after that.
I'm a retired professor of English composition and writing from an unnamed northern state, and I just was browsing the HMH materials a couple of weeks ago, and just a little shocked. Kindergarten, first grade, second grade, it was mentioned before. I didn't get up to the fourth grade, I was stunned with what they're asking the teachers to teach in kindergarten. As a teacher of persuasive writing and debate and rhetoric, I'm looking at what they're asking. Kids come up with a great idea that you can have an opinion about, think about the research and the sources, and go find some facts, and support your opinion with some facts, come up with some great closings and a good argument that's opinion writing in kindergarten. If I could do that as a freshman in my community college, I would pass them all. Somebody's being bamboozled here. Seriously. You can't have that. Second grade, third grade, fourth grade, up to fifth grade, opinion writing. I could say, "What's better, an orange or a grapefruit?" I never took kindergarten, but I can see that some thinking has to go on here, some critical thinking. The guy who's running the show, no, he's not running the show, Mr. Moore, sorry, Mr. Howard, not Mr. Moore, Mr. Howard, is teaching equity. That's what he wants to be taught. This is his opening remarks, his introduction to the teacher's handbook. "Culturally responsive pedagogy is situated in a framework that recognizes the rich and varied cultural wealth, knowledge, and skills that diverse students, diverse students, diverse students, bring to schools and seek to develop dynamic teaching practices, multicultural content, multiple means of assessment, and a philosophic view of teaching that's dedicated to nurturing students' academic, social, emotional, and cultural and psychological learning." What does that mean? This is the philosophy? This is educational philosophy that's going to trickle down to the teachers. I have serious doubts if that has any concrete effect on teaching kids language arts. There's some bamboozlement going on here.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Ariel Garretts is next, and on deck will be Susan Curtis. Hello, welcome. We won't bite you.
I'm just really nervous.
That's okay. Take a deep breath.
Oh, shit.
You got this.
Or shoot, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I don't want to touch it. Okay, I'm just going to do that. Like, that's good.
Wait a minute. Hold on.
Oh, thank you. Oh, thank you so much. Look at that. I got a helper here. Hi. Okay, I'm going to, before I actually read this, I just want to say something. Someone just said, he was talking about how he's like, his freshman students couldn't do something. Well, if they were taught at a younger age and they built upon that, maybe they could. You know, I'm just saying. So I know you have heard all the arguments a thousand times, but I just want to give you a perspective of a parent with three children in our school system. I have two neurodiverse, one autistic who's twelve, one ADHD who's six, and one neurotypical who's ten. And I could really go into detail and tell you personal stories and all that good stuff, but that's not really why I'm here. I'm here to point out that Amplify isn't even on the approved list. I don't know why we keep talking about it. I have read the petitions, and to be frank, they're just trying to nitpick and find something, anything, to make, say it doesn't meet standards, and that doesn't even make sense, because Florida approved, you know, this stuff. I mean, like, makes no sense. Now, most of the people who write the petitions, and I read them, they don't even have children in our school system, so I'm not sure why they're worried about it. Shouldn't that be the parents' responsibility? I mean, I know that they said that multiple times in their petitions. And one thing that they touched on was social-emotional learning, and now, social-emotional learning is actually helpful, many, for many students, as it models real-life scenarios, and in the autism community, they call them social stories, and that's nothing new to the world or in school. I mean, teachers use them all the time. When somebody does something wrong, you know, they use the stories to teach them. Now, the words equity, inclusion, and diversity aren't code for critical race, critical race thinking, as they'd like you to believe. Actually, none of this has anything to do with CRT, and it's been banned in Florida, so all we're trying to do is choose a curriculum, and that's it. Now, please, I beg for you to please vote on this as soon as possible. We need to give our teachers the materials and the time to prepare for teaching our children next year, because without that, they're going to fail. I mean, that's just the truth. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Susan Curtis, and after that is Karen Hilt.
Hi.
Good evening.
I'm Sue Curtis, and this is Susan Roberts, and we are not here to talk about critical race theory or textbooks or anything like that. We are here representing Sunflower Circle of the Garden Club of Indian River County. During the month of June every year, the Garden Club of Indian River County celebrates National Garden Week, and we do that by having each circle place a plant or a piece of greenery in a public building. And our circle, Sunflower, chose to make our donation here at the school... And our circle, Sunflower, chose to make our donation here at the school board district office because 75% of the Sunflower Circle members are current or former school district employees and very proud of it. In addition, I would also like you to know that the Garden Club, the overall Garden Club of Indian River County financially supports civic projects throughout Indian River County every year. In 1930, which was the first recorded evidence I could find of this, the civic project was for new landscape at Vero Beach Elementary School. Since that time, over the last 91 years, the Garden Club has provided funding for 13 different school district campuses, including Vero Beach High School multiple times, Osceola Magnet School, Treasure Coast Elementary, Wabasso School, the Freshman Learning Center, Highlands, which is currently Indian River Academy, and Sebastian Elementary. And I want to point out that currently, Carissa Circle of Indian, of Garden Club supports Vero Beach Elementary's garden and their greenhouse, which you can see very clearly from 20th Avenue. It's a pleasure for the Garden Club to keep our schools, to help keep our schools beautiful on the outside, just like they are on the inside. Thank you.
Thank you for that gift.
Sorry. Forgot.
Karen Hiltz is next, and Robert Schmidt is on deck.
Hello, I'm Dr. Karen Hiltz, and I would like to start out with saying, social-emotional learning is a subset of critical race theory. Let me first state, it's not your responsibility as a school. It is a parental responsibility to concern themselves with the social and emotional learning and capacity of their child. Couple of points from the HMH curriculum, and remember, this is grades one and two. It speaks to create a culturally responsive environment, but what does this mean? It includes promoting a culturally responsive, anti-bias environment for your classroom, points out how each child is unique, and differences are to be celebrated. It also continues with be mindful of gender considerations, reinforcing gender-neutral versions of common words such as businessperson or firefighter. Well, I grew up with businessman and fireman. Expose children to books and other learning resources that reflect their ethnicity, culture, family structure, or socioeconomic structure. It also says to educate children about the history, traditions, and contributions of various groups so that children gain an understanding of topics such as these: African and African-American history, Hispanic contributions, history of the Holocaust, and women's contributions to the United States. This is not academic-focused, but emotional-focused. Most of this sounds good, but in reality, but the reality is children are being taught to tolerate or accept rather than think, understand, and formulate between right and wrong, and why they believe in something. These are not academic, but social in nature. Parents should be teaching these character traits to their children, not the education system. Again, the focus is on feelings and the emotional intelligence of a child, not the basics of academics. These topics are unfamiliar to these ages. They're also inappropriate, in most cases, and focus on cultural differences rather than educational values. They promote divisive and demeaning emotions. Language from the Rule passed on June 10th, the state board meeting, requires you to ensure efficient and faithful teaching and factual and objective instruction is provided. As our elected officials, you are expected to make tough decisions, and this is your decision, not the superintendent's, not the state boards. It's your decision. So don't abdicate your responsibility. CRT and SEL is forcing children to have an emotional versus academic IQ. Please think about what you're supporting and import your decision. One last point, I believe instead of focusing on ISMs such as racism, genderism, socialism, and activism, we should be focusing on exceptionalism.
Thank you, Dr. Hiltz.
Every child is exceptional.
All right, Robert Schmidt is next, and Donna Bertram is after that.
Hi, thank you, Vice Chair Terry Baronbaugh. Thank you very much.
You got it.
My name is Robert Schmidt, and I love my country. I love the United States Constitution. And I love what happened here tonight, everything with Griffith, and how people are all empowered. And I love your word in transforming education to inspire all and empower all students to maximize their full potential. I think it's grand. You know, the equality that we have in we, the people. Somewhere else it said that we are equal. We're equal somewhere, right? Equal. We have equal ability to become the best that we can be with education, school, hard work, opportunities. This country has come very, very far. I don't see any slavery today. I don't see any slavery from Ireland, or Africa, or China, or, I don't see any of that in the United States any longer. I see our country has grown in leaps and bounds. Could ask many people that. I, I'm here to inject that Amplify, which is going to be taught to all the students throughout Florida, I hope, will be passed Friday or Monday, and people could see that their individuality counts and that they don't need to be told that they're racist. I, I've been watching YouTube videos all week long, from around the nation, all over. People are in an uproar about this critical race theory, that people are just, you must do this, and you must do that, and if you're white, and if you're black, and if you're this, and if you're that. Everybody has to look at you like, you're evil, you're bad, you can't do this. For what? Because of color? I think America is a lot better than that, which we are, I know we are. And I know the school board, I commend you on last, last time I was here, you all enjoyed the Amplify. I think it was Amplify that we're trying to get past and to stop the dumbing down of America with critical race theory. I mean, we know that there's 197 nations in the world, something like that. Every single one of those nations want to come to America. Why? Because we're racist? Because we're going to put you in jail? Because we're going to treat you bad? No! Because it's the land of opportunity where people could get the education and become free and individuals. So I commend the board for Amplify. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Okay, Donna Bertram is next, and Susan Meele is after that.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Donna Bertram, and I've been a resident of Indian River County since 1980. My husband and I raised our two daughters here, and they received their public education right here in Indian River County. Today, one of those daughters resides in Vero Beach and is a single mother of three daughters, is bringing up three fine young women in a Christian home. My granddaughters were also educated right here in Indian River County. And this coming school year, the youngest will be dual-enrolled at the high school and Indian River State College. I'm standing here today because I'm concerned about the future of all of the children in our county. I understand why parents who are busy raising their families and working are not able to come. I am speaking on their behalf. I have the luxury of time. I also have a passion, which includes my love of God and this country. While looking into HMH curriculum, I have learned that it is no one's first choice. And purchasing something without exhausting all avenues of a better curriculum is a wasteful burden on the taxpayers of Indian River County. I believe that our children are entitled to the best there is. HMH takes the family, particularly the parents, out of the focus and the lives of those students. I am so grateful that when we were raising our daughters, the schools did not take that approach. I am asking that you not purchase HMH and that you go directly to Amplify and work with them. No matter what you may have been told, you do not have to follow what the state has, what the state has said on this. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. All right, Susan Meele is next, and on deck is Kristi Malato.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm not going to get into a lot of detail. We've been over this, I think, a few times. We, a team of us spent days and hours and hours reviewing the curriculums. And one of our expert, one of our team members is over 20 years' history of teaching elementary English to K through two, second grade. And she helped us understand a lot more about what we're, what is in the other curriculums. And she did send some information to one of the board members, who I must say blew off the information and said that he's not an expert in education, so he will refer to the, defer to the experts and the other board members. And I'm thinking, what is she if she isn't an expert in this? What we've realized, though, is like in every industry, there are education elites, just like there are transportation elites, I can tell you. There are liberal NGOs, there are progressive college professors, and they have all told us over the last year or so what their plan is. They're the experts, they say. And then they want to use COVID and a divided country to transform education. In fact, two executives of HMH have said that they want to transform education. And one of them said CRT is at the heart of that transformation. These are people, leaders of HMH. They're telling us what the plan is, and it's by design. This reminds me back when Common Core was developed, and overnight it was approved, and it was in schools, and it took some moms in the Midwest to say, holy mackerel, what's going on here? I came to the school board in Indian River County in about 2010 and said, do not accept this expert version of education. But we got it instead. We couldn't even review all the things that were involved in HMH and report back to you because there was a select package. But we know what they're doing and selling in California and what's being taught. And I just want you to, to say to us that you guarantee that none of the stuff that we're finding, that we believe is truly bad for our kids, that is being taught in other states by HMH curriculum, curriculum, won't come to our county. Yes, we followed the process, you followed the process, and there was a hearing. But as the hearing officer said, unless we had problems with the process, there wasn't anything he could do. And he wasn't there to tell us whether it was right for there to be inaccurate, inappropriate, and biased material. He did his job. Now you have to do your job. And accepting HMH is the wrong thing for this county.
Thank you, Ms. Meele. Kristi Malato, Malado, did I say it right? Okay. And Ryan Blade is on deck.
Hello.
Hello.
How are you?
Great.
So last night at a really neat meeting, it was said that equity is not guaranteed, and all children are given equality in Florida, but it is up to the families to provide equity. Equity is an individual choice, quote. Wow. I remind these individuals that not every home is safe and stable. Not every child has a home. It is imperative that our school provide resources to all children in order for each child to reach their full potential. Each child's full potential may not look like the next child's next to them. It is our duty as adults to give them the opportunity to be successful, however that may look. I continue to hear that teachers should stick to facts. Well, the truth is, the facts we're being taught are false. Teaching history as it was can be healing and a way for us to all grow together. I lived in Germany for almost three years. There was no Germans that felt guilt over the Holocaust. But what it taught, but it was taught as it was, as it happened, so that it never happens again. So stating that teachers should be monitored is a ridiculous way to try to control our public education system. A good teacher, regardless of their political views, should be able to encourage critical thinking. Asking questions and learning through others is culturally responsive teaching. It is having tough conversations and asking questions so that we can learn from each other. Our children should question facts. This is how they grow and think for themselves as adults in our community. And also, having an LGBTQ corner does not mean we're going to fly rainbows and have a drag queen teaching, reading storybooks. It likely means that there will be books for every family in a book center to teach every child that every family may look a little bit different. Just because the new lessons make you uncomfortable doesn't mean they are wrong. My three-and-a-half-year-old daughter knows that she has a donor and two mommies, and that her stepsister has two different parents. My nine-year-old understands why we still fight for equal pay. My toddler and elementary school kid are grasping concepts that you're telling me that it's too age inappropriate. Maybe it's time that we all start learning something from them. But to the mom that said social-emotional learning is taught at the house, not every kid has a house. The school is there for them to lay a foundation and be a family to them. Can I send over 200 kids on some of my caseload in Florida to your home so you could teach them? Anybody? No. Every child in our community is our responsibility and not just our own. Ensure you truly support all before you come up here saying that you do and then post something that attacks.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Ryan Blade is next, and Bill Flynn is after that.
Laura, my name is, oh, my god. My name is Ryan Blade. I'm the vice president of the Indian River County Conservative Club. I've been talking to some folks who have had concern about HMH. I've been taking a look into this myself. I do not find that this is a curriculum that this school board should be considering purchasing. I would ask that instead the Amplified curriculum be the one purchased. What I found Amplified is, does not have a lot of the political bias in it. I do not believe that our children, my eight cousins included, ages four to 16 years old, need to be subjected to basically political indoctrination. What Dr. Karen Hiltz said was very accurate. I happen to know Dr. Hiltz personally. I would highly recommend that this board go and listen to what she has to say, and if needed, feel free to reach out. I know Jackie and Terry, they have my contact for me. I can always, you know, get the board in contact with Dr. Hiltz if that's something I could potentially arrange. That's just the big thing that I hope is that this HMH curriculum is not purchased. And I will say too, given that my leadership role in the more conservative movement around here, some of the comments that we were KKK members, descendants of oppressors, and mind you, my entire family is descended from the Northeast, myself included, that is not accurate of who we are. And the people I have spoken to around here are highly, in the conservative movement, are highly against racism. And if there is any, I will be sure to do my part to go and handle that accordingly. That's about as much I got for today. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Flynn is next, and Crystal McIntyre is after that. Good evening.
Good evening, board, superintendent. I'm a veteran, and as, with my experience as a veteran, I got the opportunity to work with the Moroccan military. And I can tell you that there is no racism in a foxhole. Just like this community, we have people coming here, and they have a choice of how they're going to live their life. We see our nation elected the first black president. All I see is the other side that, that's pro-critical race theory. They're not minorities, they're all white. So if we're all racist, then why are they trying, trying to, trying to push critical race theory? I have two grandchildren in the school system. My two kids graduated from the school system. I'm proud to be in Indian River. I'm proud to be a part of this society and a part of this community. I'm proud to be a part of this society and a part of this community. I was really encouraged with what was going on with the history with Gifford. It's very important that we learn from our past so we don't repeat the mistakes. However, if we attack the people that's changed what we were doing, how does that help the community move forward? When we see people coming from nations, this is a shining city on the hill. They come here to prosper, they work hard. Not everybody has the same goals in life. I'm a blue-collar worker. I also own my own two businesses. I work long hours. Why? Because I believe in the American dream. I believe that you can succeed if you put enough effort into it. I've tried to mentor both minority kids and kids that don't speak English well, the Hispanic community. Why? Because I can help them. I don't need to focus on anything else other than what's good for the community. It's not the school board's responsibility to be the community. Your responsibility is to educate, to teach them how economics work, how math works. They can learn everything else with their community. I've never been in a situation where I had to be told what was good and what was bad. I knew within me that racism was wrong. I don't like to hang around racist people on either side. I like my community. I think we can get beyond this. Please don't accept the stuff that you're thinking of. Let's go with the one that the state doesn't approve of, and I'm sure that we can move forward. The $10 per student might seem like a lot of money, but our kids are worth it. Wouldn't you say that? And I also was very, very disappointed in hearing a school board member go on the radio talking down about people's opinions. We're all encouraged to have our own opinions. Thank you.
Thank you, sir, and thank you for your service. Okay, Crystal McIntyre is next, and Wendy McDaniel is after that.
Once again, good evening to all the board members, teachers and staff, and other community members. And once again, until yesterday, I was very unsure of stepping back up here, but I've recently had the opportunity to read the objections to the proposed curriculum that were filed by a handful of community members. The objections that bring us to this divisive, and as lots of us see, unnecessary delay in choosing a curriculum for the district. I do want to comment on the fact that out of all these textbooks and all of this information that cover 180 days a year for six years, for these who have been the only complaints, I especially feel like we are wasting valuable time. But between those objections and last night's Heritage Meeting, it's clear to me this delay in choosing the curriculum and this delay in allowing teachers time to prepare to educate our children is plain and simply political. One speaker last night even went so far as to state their objection to the new curriculum was based on conserving conservative values. That confused me because I always thought school systems were supposed to be nonpartisan. There was also a lot of talk about how CRT, which yet again is not being promoted, no matter how many times you see the words diversity, equality, social justice, or equity. Those are not code words, they are not trigger words, they are just words. The district has been very clear they are not pushing critical race theory. HMH has been very clear it is not pushing critical race theory. The governor and the DOE have been very clear they are not pushing critical race theory. Believe them. Personally, I didn't come here to push for a specific curriculum. I would have trusted any curriculum the committee would have selected. If I didn't trust the board or the administration, I wouldn't send my kids to a district school. That said, I think I can say that most of us are here for the same reason, regardless of the size, the best interests of our kids and the kids in our community. Every minute we delay textbook adoption is another minute the teachers lose to prepare to teach our children. Last year it was masks, this year it's fake CRT. It's time to push the politics aside and bring the kids back to the forefront. It's time to trust the people we have chosen to spend all of these hours with our children, to trust the people we have elected to these positions, and to move forward with a heavily vetted curriculum. Textbooks will not replace parents. Teachers will not indoctrinate our children. No one is asking anyone to change the way they parent. No one is asking anyone to change their values. We are simply asking to move forward. And we want to let the board and the teachers and all the staff know that they do have a support system here in the community. We are here to help in any way possible and to say thank you.
Thank you. Wendy McDonald... McDaniel, sorry. And Cindy Gibbs is on deck. And, okay, anyway, go ahead.
Hi, good afternoon. I am a parent here, and I have two daughters in the school system. One wanted to come with me here tonight. And I just wanted to speak to all of the fear that we're hearing about CRT. I don't know if it's an issue in our younger classrooms, because my girls are older. But as a parent, I'm speaking out against the disinformation spread by groups that seek to divide and scare us. I'm speaking out because I want my daughters to know the racial history of our country and how racism still exists today in the fabric of our culture. I want them to know about the Tulsa massacre, the Fort Pillow massacre, redlining, voter intimidation, the genocide of Native peoples within our borders, the brutal truths about slavery. I want them to know this so when versions of the same are encountered in their lives, they will know to stand clearly and firmly against it. Despite those who would speak otherwise, as a community, we need to speak honestly about the past so that we can move forward together, understanding, mending, reconciling as we educate our children. In response to some people saying that there is no racism currently, I want to respond with, if history is not taught, it's a matter of time before it's repeated. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Cindy Gibbs is next, and before I call, who is on deck? Board members, we're getting close to the two-hour mark. Does anybody need a break after this speaker? We'll have 13 after that. We'll need a break. Okay. All right.
Hi. So in 2018, after 17 people were shot in Parkland, lots of people wanted teachers to be armed in the schools. And now here we are, just a few years later, and we don't even trust them. We think they're going to indoctrinate our children in our classrooms. What a switch. So we know that our school board and our teachers have been tasked with this decision to choose which elementary-level language arts and reading textbook to choose, right? The call for citizens to review these choices was in October 2020. And now we have people showing up in the 11th hour, all ticked off, and we have to make a last-minute hail mary decision at a meeting down in Vero where we're screaming and yelling out about how racist and Marxist and what have you our teachers are. As if any textbook isn't going to have pictures of brown children and black children and Native Americans and other indigenous people. It's everywhere. You can't get away from it because it's the truth. What is in these books that isn't CRT is stories and articles about kids who look and live like the kids in our community. And kids get really excited when they see kids that look and live just like them. That's what motivates them to read. At the Heritage Center last night, I heard a lot of folks talking about how teachers need to just teach facts. And I'm sorry, that's a thing of the past. We have an integrated curriculum. We include social studies and science content because that's how we motivate kids to be excited about reading. And we can't just talk about fiction or nonfiction, right? We have to talk about things that are meaningful to kids. I talked to a lot of teachers since our last meeting. A lot of them are my personal friends. I actually had a lot of people reach out to me. I know that one of our school members, school board members at the last meeting requested or suggested a desire for our teachers to come and stand up here and speak for themselves. And I'm here to tell you that they are afraid to do that. They don't feel represented because they've been watching these school board meetings, and they're hearing people and seeing people come down here and accuse them of being things that they are so far from the truth of being. People don't go to get a bachelor's in education or a master's in education or a PhD in education because they want to come and ruin your child's life. Teaching school is really hard. It's a passion, it's a calling. That's why they do it. I want to share one thing with you that I did hear from a person who is a personal friend of mine and a current teacher in our educational system here. Something I focused on this year in my classroom and something that was shared weekly with my entire school was the concept of using children's literature as windows and mirrors. Students need to be able to look through a window into someone else's life and use their perspective. So she was using books that share about discrimination, but also books that mirror children's lives so that they feel accepted in the classroom. Please, please choose this textbook series so we can get going. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, board members, it is 8 o'clock. We will take a 10-minute recess. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Was that my speaker Cindy Gibbs or Cindy Gibbs, the next speaker?
The last speaker was Cindy Gibbs.
Thank you. Okay. So, next speaker is Kim Westcott and on deck will be Wendy McDaniel. We had another Wendy McDaniel, so I'm not sure if it's the same.
Good evening. Thank you all. I know you are having a long night and I appreciate you continuing to listen. In kind of being out there and listening to the night, I feel like there's one thing that's gotten lost as we've gone through this process over the last, however long it's been now, weeks. We have forgotten that HMH was never the county's first choice. Amplify was always the county's first choice and it's simply a better curriculum. That's why the selection committee for the county selected it. So at the hearing on Friday, I closed my remarks with what's the price of our children's education? And it seems now we have an answer. It's less than $20 per student difference. I think it's even as low as $10. And I'd like to urge you to spend that small amount of extra money to do what you want to do and what you were elected to do, to lead the county into being the best school system in this state. If you purchase Amplify, you are following the process set forth by this county. That process determined the children in this county would be best served by Amplify's curriculum. When it seemed likely the board wouldn't follow the recommendations of the county committee and the county experts, citizens came forward to say second best for our students in this county isn't good. And it was done through petitions. Fortunately, and I know some people felt very unfortunately, but I feel like fortunately, those petitions caused delays that now put us in the position of possibly knowing before a decision needs to be made that Amplify will be approved by the DOE. And then it negates even the $10 issue that we're talking about per student. The teachers and students in this county deserve what they have deemed the best curriculum for our students and families. Dr. Moore and you all have said you want us to be the best system, and that will be never achieved with a second-best curriculum. So as a school board, lead this county to academic success and please, for the extra $10 per student, don't settle for second best or worse. The decision isn't the DOE's or anyone else's. It is entirely yours and I encourage you to really make the right decision. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker is Wendy McDaniel. Okay, so she must have been filled out too. Okay. Laura Boyce and Angela Bowling will be on deck. Good evening.
Hi. I'm speaking today as a parent and as a current teacher. I'm not here to talk about critical race theory. I do know what it is. But I feel like the governor has settled that issue and now I have to just trust that this board will do the right thing. However, I do think it is naive to think that political activism is not already in the classroom despite whatever curriculum we may have. Increasingly, teachers are viewing their classrooms as an opportunity to recruit students as political activists. I hate to break it to the board and to parents, but the curriculum adoption is the least of your worries. Teachers have a captive audience and plenty of opportunities to spew whatever ideas they want in their classroom. I recently discovered that this was happening in my own child's class. My child was subjected to lessons that included video lectures from violent BLM activists, a video of a transgender activist lecturing students on civic duties, gay pride parades, anti-American and anti-police sentiment. Many lessons were factually incorrect or misleading. Much factual information was left out purposefully to promote socialism. I have pictures and copies of all this if you want to see it. Lessons were anti-conservative. President Trump was mocked and lied about in class. For writing assignments, students were given a list of totally biased sources and they were instructed that those sources were the only ones they were allowed to use in their writing. I have raised my children in a Christian conservative home, above all, teaching them to love all people, to work hard, and how blessed they are to be Americans. My child often felt isolated and afraid to speak up for fear of retribution. He never even told me, even as his values were being demonized daily, where is his safe space? On the first day of class, his teacher announced that she is quote, "passionate about social justice," showing photos of her participating in BLM protests, which we all know has done nothing for the black community. Teaching values to my children is my job. I want to speak as a teacher. I've taught school for 17 years. I've taught over 2,500 students from all different backgrounds, treating them all with dignity and respect. I notice that many teachers don't speak up. Are they afraid? I can tell you that students face a lot of issues in the school and a lot of these go unanswered. As far as politics in the classroom goes, as a teacher, it disgusts me. How hard is it for you as a teacher to just teach your subject? Where is the oversight for these teachers who go rogue? Who is monitoring this?
Thank you. Michelle Sanford is on deck. Next, we have Angela Bowling.
Hi, everybody. Thank you. It doesn't bend, right? Or it does bend? Yes. Okay. I've been interested to hear some of the comments that were made tonight and especially some of the objections to the curriculum that were named. And I personally thought that all the things that were named out of the curriculum sounded like great things to include in a curriculum. I think that the idea of a kindergartner writing their opinion is very easy to imagine and believe. I mean, my kids all had very strong opinions by the time they were two years old and didn't really hesitate to express them. And when my kids, who were very privileged as whites to go to and also to have the opportunity to attend Osceola Magnet School as children, when they were in kindergarten, they were writing. You know, they were taught to just start writing whatever story they wanted to tell and it didn't matter if they couldn't spell it or they had bad grammar or any of that, but they were getting their ideas down on paper. And if they couldn't write them with words, then they could draw pictures for their stories. So yeah, teaching them to write an opinion is good. And, you know, the lessons in elementary schools should include elements that recognize and appreciate the differences in all of us and celebrate those differences. And I mean, if there's those stories about racist incidents happening, that's great. That's such a good thing for kids to be able to learn and hear about. Because, you know, I raised my kids in a Christian conservative home and I taught them empathy from day one. I didn't teach them enough about the racism that exists in our country still. And I didn't even know about all the stuff that has gone on in our country. I had to go, I had to learn about so much of our history just in the last year. My kids, you know, had to go away, graduate out of our Indian River County schools and go away to learn some more about American history, even though they took AP American History, you know, in the high school. So I hope that we will include more information about the truth of what, so that we can learn from it. We really, we really do need to appreciate what's going on so that we can not make the same mistakes over again. So embedding diversity and equity in our curriculum is the right way to build understanding and empathy. Oh, man, that went so fast.
It does that, doesn't it?
I decided to wing it tonight.
Thank you.
Thanks.
All righty. Michelle Sanford is next. Mike Cozad is on deck. Cozad. And you've called for Michelle Sanford? Did she call for Michelle Sanford again?
We have plenty of, do you want to make an announcement? Sorry. We have plenty of seats in here.
Yeah, there are plenty of seats in here if people that are out there would like to come in.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. And they've left or you don't know? I'll just hold the cards. Okay. Dawn Wilkerson is next. After that will be Sarah Hill.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Dawn Wilkerson. Earlier, someone spoke about a group of people being here tonight that were coming against our teachers. I don't know if they were talking about us, but I just personally wanted to say that I love our teachers. We have great teachers in this county. I have eight or nine of them that are personal friends. So I just wanted to give a shout out to our teachers. They do a tremendous job in our county. And by the way, one of our speakers, Chrissy, that left here that said she has a caseload, I offered to help. We want to help. We want to reach out. We want to meet these needs that she has and just help in our community. I do believe that telling a child that they are in a permanent oppressed status in America because of the color of their skin is racist and also telling them that someone is above them because of the color of their skin is also racist. This is not something we can allow in our country. Children should love and respect each other based on the fact that they are human beings. I am here to express my concern with both HMH and Amplify. Upon reviewing many samples of these materials, there is concern for CRT being sprinkled throughout and I am strongly against this being taught to our children, especially in elementary schools. I would like us to please leave politics, race, and sexual orientation out of materials taught to our children. I watched a video from the school board meeting on May 11th, 2021, where Dr. Moore admitted that the same tentacles of critical race theory will be present in Amplify as it is in HMH. How does that line up with the several of you who have said that we will not be teaching CRT in our schools? It sounds like we're kind of talking out of both sides of our mouth. Florida State Board of Education banned critical race theory from public school classrooms adopting new rules it said would shield schoolchildren from curricula that could distort historical events. CRT has been banned and Dr. Moore has admitted that both of these curriculums contain CRT. So now what? I of course want to see our teachers get their materials as soon as possible so that they can be familiar with all this material before they come back to school. However, will you petition the DOE? Will you find the best curriculum for our children that does not contain CRT? Do you plan to knowingly violate the governor's order by moving forward with curriculum that of your own admission has elements of CRT in it? I would really welcome a response from anyone that would be willing to shed some light on that. Thank you very much and I do appreciate all that you do for our community.
Thank you. Sarah Hill is the next speaker and Tony Brown, I think, went home. He told me he already spoke. Okay. After that will be Paul Westcott.
Good evening, Dr. Moore and school board.
Good evening.
Very patient. Very patient tonight. I have read the stories in grade four HMH and looked at the books offered in the sequence of reading instruction in Amplify. And I find these publishers are different as night and day. Since you did not attend the hearing of multiple objections to HMH, here are a few reviews of the offensive material used for instruction. The lesson on narrative poetry. There are three pages that shows a landmass from northern Canada to the Central American countries with no borders. The only country labeled is Mexico. Fourth graders should be able to locate the United States on a map, but I would not assume that if using this series. This story is, "My Name Is Jose Miguel, Not Joe, Not Mike." Children are bullying Miguel about using dog meat and tacos being sold at the New Miguel's Tacos. Mr. Tate, his teacher, comes over, not to stop the bullying, but as the story goes, Mr. Tate keeps saying to me, quote, "If you would let us call you Joe or Mike, it would let you blend in." This is condoning bullying and making a racist statement to a child. The next story, "My Name Is Lily, Who Is Chinese But Speaks Spanish." Other children say to her, "For you Chinese people, learning languages must be easy." Lily complains, quote, "It's nice when I don't have to explain." Year of the Rat is also a Chinese story about Pacey, who's questioning her talents. She wants her parents to help her decide, but her dad explains, "But that doesn't mean we really know you. You see, only you really know yourself and only you can make your decisions," unquote. This is undermining the influence of parents in the family. Rent, Party, Jazz describes a young boy, Sonny, and his interaction with a street musician. He is sad because he and his mother may be evicted due to her loss of job. The musician, Smile &amp; Jim, suddenly looks serious, quote, "Back in Mississippi, where I come from, they did the same thing to colored folks all the time," unquote. This insertion of historical racism is inflammatory. My diary, From Here to There, is a lesson on autobiographical fiction. The author's family left Mexico for the United States when she was five. She states that, quote, "I didn't know that I, like so many other economic and political refugees, could survive in a completely new place," unquote. The story deals with border issues, green cards, and a situation where an immigration officer kicks a woman and her children off the bus.
Thank you, Ms. Hill.
Thank you. This is only five of 12 objections.
Thank you. Okay, Mr. Westcott is next and Shawna Carpenter is after that.
I want to start first reminding you of your statutory and constitutional responsibility, not as a threat, not to wag my fingers, but to empower you to do the right thing. Florida Constitution and Florida statutes give you the duty and responsibility to pick the best curriculum. We have an integration order that also demands the same thing. We need to satisfy that order, not defeat it. Unfortunately, our history has been litigation involved, spending millions of dollars trying to defeat it. We need to satisfy it. How are we going to satisfy it? By teaching well. How are we going to teach well? By providing the best curriculum. Now, we had a process a few months ago that produced two. Those are the two topics for tonight. Amplify, HMH. CRT was not part of the conversation, as best I can tell from my conversations with Mr. Meyer. Amplify was the best choice, period. Why wouldn't we want to use that? Your leadership role puts you in the position of having actually a more difficult job than Mr. Meyer. Mr. Meyer has the technical job of reviewing what was in his green boxes, okay? You've been told by way of website, if you've done your homework, online material, that HMH is committed to clouding the waters with critical race theory. They've made that very clear, okay? Amplify has not made that clear. Well, why does that matter? Well, it matters because when you buy this curriculum, you're purchasing a five-year relationship. It's a five-year marriage. During that marriage, what's going to happen? HMH is going to feed you online digital material, consumables, et cetera. So you're going to have to continually monitor them because they've told you what they want to do. They've made it very clear. You're going to have to monitor them. So you're going to buy the second-best curriculum. So you're going to buy the second-best curriculum after spending millions of dollars fighting an order, rather than possibly spending $10, and as my understanding, it may only be $80,000 between the two buys. I would much rather you invest that extra $80,000 to buy the right curriculum that's going to do the job, that your own system has produced as the best choice. You have the freedom to make that choice. You do not get to hide behind DOE, don't get to hide behind the committee process. You've got two curriculums to choose from, not one. You've got two. One of them is superior to the other by operation of your own system. Pick that one. I appreciate that you haven't, excuse me, you previously ruled out CRT for our community. And you remember this video months ago? CRT to give, isn't about history, it's about teaching one of these boys that he's the oppressor and the other one that he's the oppressed, and that's the problem. History is fine, good and bad. This is not. Thank you.
Thank you. Shawna Carpenter is next, and the speaker after that on deck is Kevin Browning. No Shawna Carpenter, okay? Is Mr. Browning here?
I want to say thank you tonight for allowing us to be here and speak. Want to tell you about my family. In my family, we have, of course, some black people, white, Puerto Ricans, Mexicans, Arabs, Indians, and others. Very true. Thank you, board, for the presentation tonight, the Gifford history and about what's happening in the county. I've been in this community since 1978, went to Citrus Elementary, Gifford Middle 6th, Gifford Middle 7th, Vero Beach Junior High School, and finally Vero Beach High School, then graduated with about four scholarships from this wonderful place. Seen a lot of events and a lot of school boards. But until now, I've never seen a board person or a person on the board who has intentionally stoked racial divisions for herself or former members' political folly, and on top of that disrupted and nearly destroys a curriculum adoption process needlessly, which pushed the whole system behind the curve in teaching the standards and testing. One board member has insulted, demonized, and used old-age stereotypical tactics to make black people the villains by saying black people want whites to apologize them, by saying Black Lives Matter is doing things in the curriculum, and saying that racial justice and equity and equality is racism. Well, in my humble little old opinion, I don't think we should stick around and watch this board member lie on black people as well as lie on teachers by saying that they're teaching critical race theory or other things and then pretend like they're the victim. You're not the victim. This community is the victim of the chaos and the division that's been perpetrated. And unfortunately, we're probably wringing this community for a while until people realize the damage that's been done. We need board members who can unite the community and represent all people, not one who comes in as a wolf in sheep's clothing and then turn and divide and scapegoat those who you think are weak in the most insulting ways. Hopefully, we all remember the mistake made the first time and not repeat it.
Thank you, Mr. Browning. Ms. Pippen, and that is our last speaker.
Good evening. Good evening. My name is Jennifer Pippen. I am the Moms for Liberty chairman of Indian River County and also the administrator, one of them, for We the People of Indian River County. I feel like we're going back about a year when we first started talking about the masking mandates and who was in power and who was in charge, and you're talking to Cleveland Clinic, you're talking to the Health Department, you're talking to all of these places, and at the end of the day, we elected you to take care of our children, our teachers, our staff. We chose you to make the best decision for them. And school was pushed back two weeks to make sure that the COVID-19 protocols were in place and everything was ready to go for our children against anything that the parents wanted to do, we understood. So why can't we do that with this? Of course, nobody wants to push it back, but our children, our staff, our teachers deserve the best curriculum. It's not just for the students, it's for the teachers and staff as well. So if we can push back school two weeks for a virus, why can't we push this back a little longer to make the best decision? Because you see the conflict. I'm not going to repeat anything that anybody has said this evening. HMH is not the right choice. Amplify may or may not be the right choice either. I personally don't believe so because when you look at the websites, it tells you right on there what they're about. So please, make the right choice for the teachers, the staff, and everybody. And this hostility between the two groups and parties, I don't know where it happened or what's going on, but the division, we haven't even adopted a curriculum yet, and people in that second room can't even make eye contact with each other, or you hear them whisper under their breath, "There's the KKK members, there's the Klan members." I've been called the worst names that I've ever been called in my entire life because I stand up for children and parental rights, and I believe in Moms for Liberty. We're a national organization. I had somebody ask me this weekend, "Do you have any black people in your organization?" I gave them my business card, and I wrote Keisha King on the back. She's been on Fox News, she's been everywhere. She's a mother of four, she's African-American. She talked about oppressors oppressing. She went to the DOE, she made a statement. We are not racist. Children are taught racism, and that's wrong. We're the human race. We should not be judged by the color of our skin, and it should not be in our curriculum. Look at lawyers, look at doctors. They're white, they're African-American, they're Hispanic. If they grew up in the public school systems, because they did the right things. They went through education and made the right choices. Please, if we can push it back for a virus, push it back to make the best decision for everybody in our school district. Thank you.
Thank you. One last call for Shawna Carpenter, Michelle Sanford, or Mike Cozad. They're not in the lobby? Okay, great. Okay. Board members, I guess that concludes our citizen input. I'd just like to say thank you to our community for coming out, exercising your First Amendment rights, for being example to other communities on how to be respectful and have a dignified exchange of opinions and ideas without disdain and discord. I appreciate that. I have watched other board meetings, and this was probably the best behaved one I have seen in a long time, so I appreciate Indian River County for that. Thank you. Anyone else? Dr. Moore? Okay. So now we're on to consent agenda. There was one item, two items that were polled. I need approval for consent agenda items.
Make a motion? Second.
Thank you. Jackie? Okay. Doc on the second. Any discussion? Okay. All right. A call for the vote?
Aye.
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 Aye? Any opposed?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Five-oh. Great. All right, so now we'll move to our action item. We did poll two items. One is going to be put on a further agenda. The other one is been moved from consent to this agenda. Superintendent, that was your, that was your consent item. It's now an action item.
Thank you, Madam Chair. That is the item regarding the topic of the evening, which is the curriculum. I'll provide a brief overview of the process that we have taken, provide some remarks, and ask Mr. Meyer to provide some additional remarks. We had our hearing on Friday. As everyone knows, the hearing came back that the school system, the district, has followed the appropriate process and has the authority to fully approve HMH, which is on the state's list. Lot of conversation about Amplify. Truth in point, Amplify was the district's first process, first initially identified curriculum. Went through the process. It was the selection. When the state produced its list, it was not on the state's approved list. We have continued to keep Amplify alive as a board and as a team, providing, we went back to the process, we added HMH as a, the curriculum that we would approve in order to have a curriculum that is on the state's approved list. Not being on the state's approved list is a concern. I don't think I would bring a recommendation to this board to approve an item that's not on this state list. This is the experts who have gone through, done a review of the curriculum. This is the state experts as well, who are looking at the criteria that need to be in place. Amplify, for the last two and a half months, has been working with the state, and the state working with Amplify in order to determine what needs to be done in order to be placed on that list. I don't know what needs to be done to be placed on that list. I do know there's been a volume of work in order to, to make that, that happen. HMH is a quality product. HMH will allow us to obtain all of the goals that we set for ourselves, and we say it all the time. The goals that we've set for ourselves are absolutely rigorous in nature and truly ambitious in terms of what we want to accomplish for our children, and we can accomplish the same with Amplify. We need to provide resources to our teachers. We need to provide the appropriate time for pacing guides to be developed. Part of the work that we do over the summer is the creation of how information will be delivered to children, what information will be pulled from our textbooks to be delivered to children, the appropriate amount of time, lessons will be created in classrooms, how to monitor that from a leadership perspective and coaching perspective. There's a great deal of work that we're already behind in terms of making sure that we're ready for the opening of schools. Teachers want the curriculum in their hand. They want to look at it, they want to digest it, they want to understand what it, what that, what they're being asked to teach. Moving to a new curriculum is going to be extremely difficult. We're going from an environment where there were a number of different curriculums being taught, many of them not at all aligned to the standards. Some of the issues and concerns about is it age-appropriate isn't driven by the textbook, but in the textbook's response to the standards that the state has approved. They're providing the lessons based on the information in the standards that need to be covered at specific grade levels. That's why you're seeing those particular lessons. So what's before the board is a curriculum that's fully approved on the state's list, appropriately vetted with the assurances this district gives in the preparation, professional development, and training that we will ensure that staff and teachers are ready to provide meaningful support and instruction to students. So I ask Mr. Meyer to go through some of the findings from the hearing and touch on some of the, the critical race theory responses, also including some of the state board rule information that was released by the governor earlier the week before last.
Thank you, Dr. Moore. I think you did a great job of going through the process, and you know, and certainly, you know, at this juncture, we, we have done everything by the book, by both Florida statute and by local school board policy to review curriculum and make a recommendation to the board. On Friday, we did have the opportunity to sit before an unbiased public hearing officer. Petitioners were able to state their case as to whether or not the material violated specific statutes as referenced in, in policy, and the hearing officer did have 14 days for which to return a final order, but we received that much earlier than expected. We received that yesterday, and the findings were that the petitioners did not make a case that the materials violated the statute. That, that did not come as a surprise. As aforementioned, the, the material has been reviewed by the Department of Education. It was petitioned in another Florida public school district before a different public hearing officer, and all three results were the same. You know, the, the rule that was recently passed by the State Board of Education, which bans critical race theory, is certainly something that we intend to make sure is fully implemented within our schools as well. But in looking at how the State Board of Education defined that rule, it is also clear that the HMH into Reading, Florida, does not contain those components within. Certain buzzwords that some people may want to, to make, you know, be connected, that, that's not, I don't think there's a wide agreement about that. I don't believe there's a wide agreement that social-emotional learning is the same thing as critical race theory. I think most people would completely disagree with that, and certainly, the state board did not include that in their definition when they did have the opportunity to do so. So, and, and looking at the totality of what the district has gone through, certainly a long and arduous process, but at this juncture, as Dr. Moore stated, that we are at a position where we, we have a recommendation that I feel is fully vetted and is an appropriate recommendation to the board, keeping in mind the governor's directive to eliminate common core, and keeping in mind the legislature's directive to implement core instructional materials beginning July 2021, that meets certain criteria. I, I do feel like we're at the point now where we do have to make a decision to be in compliance with state laws, so simply saying that we're just not going to do something would not, not be a recommendation that I could make. I feel is my obligation to make a recommendation to the board of product that meets all criteria set forth by statute, rule, and the recommendations of the governor. So we've done that through HMH into Reading, Florida, and I'm not sure what other questions I can answer, but we'd be happy to do so.
Board members, I'm sure everyone wants to weigh in. I know we had a long discussion today in our workshop, but we did pull this to action so that we could have some comments made before, at the business meeting. Before we do that, though, could I ask the board attorney to please explain why board members were asked not to attend the appeal hearing?
Absolutely. Thank you, Mrs. Barrenborg. The, the process that was put in board policy with regard to instructional material adoption and the process that was followed by district staff is similar to other administrative processes that this board has followed. For instance, when there is a student discipline matter that needs to come before the board, the process put in place is for an independent hearing officer to initially have the evidentiary hearing and then make a written recommendation to the board with regard to student discipline or student expulsion. Similar to issues that, excuse me, with regard to personnel, personnel discipline or termination provision, there is a, a, a policy or a practice here that issues that need to come before the board are first put before the Division of Administrative Hearings for a hearing officer to do evidentiary findings and then present a written recommendation to the school board for the school board to take action. So with those other processes in mind, the process put together for instructional material adoption was very similar, was for the board to initially hear the matter, take a lot of public comment, hear a public hearing in front of yourselves, and in the event individuals were not pleased with any outcome of those meetings with the school board, an independent hearing officer process was put in place by law for an independent hearing officer to then also conduct a public hearing. My recommendation has always been with regard to these other administrative processes with regard to student discipline and employee discipline or termination, that board members not involve themselves with the hearing officer process, allow the hearing officer to perform their work and present their written recommendation to you, and then you take action with regards to the written recommendation. And that was, again, my recommendation with regard to this instructional material adoption process. When you have an independent hearing officer conducting the evidentiary hearing, to allow that hearing officer to do their work and then prepare their written recommendation, which happened here, and present to the board for you to take final action. It wasn't removing you from the process, it wasn't... It wasn't removing you from the process, it wasn't delegating your authority to anyone, it was simply following a very standard administrative law process when you're using an independent hearing officer, for that hearing officer to handle the evidentiary hearing and then present that recommendation to you in writing.
Okay, thank you.
So, just two other things to finalize Mr. Meyer's comment and my comments before we turn it over. Just a little bit more about SEL, Social-Emotional Learning, is not critical race theory, that is the opportunity for us to address the social-emotional needs of students, ensuring that they are equipped to sit in classrooms and empowered to learn. Culturally responsive teaching is a practice of ensuring that our educators have a full understanding of who the students are in the classroom and a deep understanding of their particular backgrounds in order to provide the most meaningful education possible. It was also said during public comments that the board has paid millions of dollars as it relates to our desegregation order, not this board. This board has done more in the last six months than any other board for the last 54 years. In misinforming the community, everyone has the right to speak freely, but we have to be consistent and be truthful in what we're saying. We've done more work around ensuring that every single student in this community feels welcome and embraced, and this board should be proud of the work that they've done in that particular area.
Okay, thank you. Board members, who would like to speak?
I want to ask a question.
Oh, okay, Dr. Jones.
Just a question before we have a discussion, and I'm sorry I didn't bring this up at the workshop. Are we in violation of any state law if we don't begin the year with a language arts series that's been state-adopted with the new benchmarks?
We are not in violation of any state law, but we are provide, we would not be providing the standards to the students that we're obligated to provide. So we need to be able to teach the standards, this is a brand-new standard that's going into place, we currently do not have the resources, the materials to cover those particular standards.
Okay, Mrs. Rosario?
Yeah, I also have a couple of questions before discussion. Mr. Meyer, the process that the district took to vet HMH or Amplify during that process, why was Amplify the district's first choice?
So, as we, through the chair, as we moved through the process, we wanted to make sure we were looking at all of the available options that were going to be bidding on the state list, and so we moved and requested those materials. As those materials were received by the schools, the various teachers looked through the different materials and then reported their findings to committee members who came back here to the district office, and there was very powerful discussion that, like, as we stated, and the timeline began, you know, almost seven months ago now. You know, there's pros and cons, right, when you're looking at six, seven different publishers, there's going to be some things that some do better than others. This publisher may have a better online material, this publisher may have better student-centered material, these may be more strong in the science of reading, these may be more strong in alignment to the standards, right? So there's a lot of different components that the committee took into consideration before making the final decision. I should say that a very large number of our teachers and a number of the committee members found HMH to be their first choice, and as those discussions were going on between the committee members, you know, HMH was looking like it was going to be the first choice, but as we discussed, other components, Amplify came out on top. You know, I did have to speak to a number of faculties after that because they felt like their voice wasn't heard in the selection of Amplify, they felt like their voice was loud enough that HMH should have been the first choice, but I tried to reassure them that, you know, we will work together to get this done, and all voices really and truly are valued, and we move forward with Amplify because, as we can see now, though, the position that we're in, we knew that we needed to, looking at the timeline, looking at the Florida statutes, begin our review process, had we not done that, you just can't wait until the Department of Education releases their list, you know, on April 1st. So Amplify did come out to be, you know, on top compared to that committee, but there were many teachers at the teacher level, local level, that felt like HMH was a high-quality product, and it is, you know, when you look at the ratings released by the Department of Education, that Amplify is not on yet, we don't know when, or really honestly if, we hear that, you know, they're going to be, but we don't know when, but HMH is highly rated on that list of products released by the state of Florida. So, that was the process we went through, Amplify was the first choice, and, you know, it took some convincing, I think, to get a vote there that was close to unanimous, you know, we, like I said, we were teetering on the 50/50 range, and then there's a discussion like, we need to all be uniform in this, and can we come to consensus so that we're supporting each other, even though, you know, we're more on the HMH bandwagon initially, said, okay, we understand why the proponents of Amplify were leaning in that direction, and I feel, you know, supporting them now, being on the side that was more supportive of Amplify is the right thing to do because that's the product that meets the criteria set forth by the state of Florida. So, I don't know if that answers your question or not, no? What are you looking for?
Yes, you did in terms of the, in terms of the process.
Follow-up?
But I was looking for examples of content, I was looking for those specific components that you mentioned that were better in Amplify than in HMH, and you may not have that immediately in front of you, I don't know if you do, if you're able to answer that.
I mean, I can speak to the generalities, the generalities of it were that the text in Amplify was more rigorous, it was more content-based and more informational text, and there were those that felt like that was a strong selling point, and so they felt like that, you know, there was, there were challenges from the committee around the usability of Amplify, and we've heard that in other places as well, that it's more difficult for teachers to implement. Now, this district has done a lot of work under Dr. Moore's direction to improve coaching, and so there were those that felt, you know, with the support of the coaching, with the support of the PD, we could overcome some of what was perceived to be shortcomings of the ability for teachers to quickly implement that, and that's where teachers were coming from, and some spaces saying HMH is going to be, you know, much more easy to get to 100% fidelity of implementation, which is going to benefit the students, and ultimately, I think that was the great part that I enjoyed about that committee, is that everyone on there had the students' outcomes in mind, they wanted to teach the students to read, they wanted to make sure we're maximizing our ability to serve our students. I will tell you that the political conversations were nowhere to be found, it was all about how do we, how do we get to the best implementation so our students have the best outcomes because that's what they deserve, and there's definitely different ways of making that happen, right? And belief structures as to, you know, can we do it with more support or with less support, is it better to have, you know, the differences in beliefs between some of the committee members on foundational reading components or the density of the text and providing them, you know, more rigorous background knowledge. So, it was a great conversation, I enjoyed it, you know, but at this juncture, like I said, it's time to make the, I feel at least, in the board's hands, but I feel like we are at the point where we've discussed it and, you know, we need to make a decision, but I would keep talking about it forever, but I know we can't do that.
I know. We know your passion for curriculum, but to take it just a little bit further in that, when people, when the committee is looking at the pages that are before them, they're not just flipping the pages saying, oh, that story sounds nice, that question sounds nice, this seems like it would be a good lesson for students in the classroom, it's not that way. How are they, how is the committee prepared to do this crosswalk between what they're looking at in the pages of the book with the new standards?
And that was a great thing to be able to do, that we did have the standards guide released, and so that was, you know, where I think that the value of listening to some of the individuals who had spent more time in the training, like the coaches and some of the other individuals that had had an opportunity to participate in more of the training on the new standards, could see the alignment between the tasks, not just between HMH and Amplify, but the others as well, to make sure that they were aligned closely to the standards, because that's what we've learned, right? That's what we've learned over the past couple decades as standards line instruction has become a more important tool, is that, you know, you have to teach what's expected by the state, otherwise you aren't meeting those levels of performance, and ultimately the entire system is going to suffer. So, as the state's adopted the new best standards, it's imperative that we have a material that they've reviewed and they agree matches those standards because, you know, if the district was not to do that, my fear would be, you know, you're going to get D-schools, you're going to get F-schools, you're going to have the state take over because you're preparing students for something that's not on the state test. And once again, it's not the boogeyman, you know, Common Core, these are the standards that were developed under the direction of Governor DeSantis to eliminate Common Core, to make sure our students have the highest outcome. So, I just feel it's imperative to select a product that's on the list where we have the assurances that our students will be successful.
I don't think you need to try to convince me that we don't need Common Core, that's a sure sell, but I want to talk, I'm asking about this process and the best standards with regard to HMH and/or Amplify. Essentially, my initial question was why Amplify was the better, the first choice for the district, because the kindergarten, the issues regarding kindergarten, Dr. Moore, I'm going to disagree here, I do know that publishers write their curriculum based on, they're supposed to write their curriculum based on the standards so that there is an alignment here, but what has been brought forth with regard to the kindergarten concerns and what kindergarteners are expected to write in HMH does not, is not in the standards. I'm looking at the standards right here, they're expected in kindergarten to print upper and lowercase letters, and when they're expected to express opinions, it's through drawing. So I, do you prefer vanilla ice cream, I'm not saying that's it, but as a kindergartner, their opinion, I like ice, I like vanilla more than strawberry ice cream, whatever it is. Kindergarteners cannot do what was expressed multiple times by the people that we heard tonight, by those who expressed their opinions at the hearing, by those who submitted objections, that's not age-appropriate, and those do not fall in line with the standards that are in and on and listed in C-POMs from elementary, I'm sorry, from ELA, let me go to the front so people can look for it, Florida's Best Standards, English Language Arts, Florida, I'm sorry, Florida ELA Standards and Benchmarks, with clarifications and examples. So, that's a concern.
Through the chair, I'm looking at the best standards that document the PDF that was approved by the state board, and there are three types of writing that kindergartners are expected to do, argumentative, expository, and, and, let me show this page, and narrative. So, but to your point, the way that the kindergarten version, and these are standard spiral, so they grow as you start in kindergarten and get to 12th grade, so narrative writing, the explicit language of that standard is using a combination of drawing, dictating and/or writing, create narratives with the events in chronological, or argumentative writing is using a combination of drawing, dictating and/or writing, express opinions about a topic or text with at least one supporting reason. But your point's valid, right? And some of the other petitioners have a point as well, but you think about the wide variety of talent that our kindergartners come in with, while not all of them can write, some of them can. Some of them can absolutely read and some of them can absolutely write, and so having a standard that says using that combination thereof certainly enables us to differentiate and ensure there's growth for each and every student and not have a lower set of standards, simply because some students may not be ready for that. But I think that's where we get into, the materials themselves were designed around these standards, and that's why you see three different types of writing, and we can, you know, between you and I, and like I said, I'll continue to talk about this, but, you know, the state board adopted these standards, right? These are the three, these are the standards from the State Board of Education that we're required to teach in August.
No, I think that they're, I think they're accurate, I think they're spot-on, without question. We had someone today come up and say that her two-year-old is able, was able to argue their point. My two-year-old was able to argue his point too, he's still arguing with me to this day. He's still trying to explain to me his point of views and why they're right versus, and why mine are wrong, you know, and that's not, it's not the issue, but it should be age-appropriate. We're not expecting kindergarteners, I'm not expecting kindergarteners to do a research project that a higher elementary school student can do. I mean, they're very, it's a vast difference of expectation. My wonder, my question is, I wonder if HMH has lesson plans, which we've heard multiple times by many people, that they have brought forth objections to many things within HMH's curriculum being, not being age-appropriate. I wonder what would happen at the, at the classroom level? So they're given a textbook, workbook, whatever it is, teacher teaches to it, what would happen in the event that teachers say, this is not acceptable for my class grade level? Are we, what would happen then?
Through the chair, that's a great question. So, I think it is important also to note that none of these, no instructional material in any course should just be, you know, thrown at a teacher and expect them to be able to do this all by themselves, that's why we have instructional coaches, that's why we have collaborative planning, that's why we have district curriculum support specialists, that we make sure that every lesson that we're providing to every student is of the most aligned quality that it possibly can be, and if we have to supplement, we supplement, if we have to refine the lesson, we refine the lesson, and that's just the nature of high-quality instruction. Simply, you know, cracking open the book and saying, just read straight through this and that's it, that's the end-all, be-all, you're not going to get as high of results as if you are truly looking at each page and making the most use of that through, you know, I guess I use the word supplementation, but it is, it is done with the coach who is the expert of the content, and it is done collaboratively, so a teacher is not just there together, and so, yeah, absolutely, when we find that certain chapters or certain stories or certain tasks within a module aren't going to generate the outcomes that we want, we modify that, and that's what, that's what, that's what everyone does in every content, so.
And I just, I think you effectively answered the question, but we've made a significant contribution to coaches and the training of coaches. The days of saying, teacher, here is your book, here is your teacher guide, and here are your 22, 18, or 25 kids, see you at the end of the year, no longer exist. We will not obtain the outcomes that our children deserve if that's our structure. So, all of the Power BI dashboards that we have celebrated over the course of the last year are linked to student outcomes, and that's informative data that we use to determine the impact of instruction, and we use our coaches, we use our common planning time, teachers helping teachers really to define and create lessons using the materials and resources that are provided. So, this is working shoulder to shoulder, teachers working with teachers, coaches working with teachers, administrators working with coaches and teachers, to come together with a common understanding as to what core instruction looks like that is in fact aligned to the standard. This is hard, complex work. We have children in classrooms who are at 18 different learning needs. The foundation is that core curriculum, whether it be Amplify or whether it be HMH, we need to have the skills of the teacher in the classroom to say, how do I take this and make it appropriate for every single student in my class to take wherever he or she may be, up to the rigor of the standard? And I think we've grown so much in the last year in doing that and will continue to do so.
Yeah, I'm going to end here, Madam Chair, Vice Chair. I appreciate that, Dr. Moore, because the work that the coaches do and with, and with collaborative planning and differentiated instruction is very, very critical, but I ask these questions because we have constituents who have not had these questions answered, and it's important for us as board members to allow more opportunity for clarification on some of these topics, so I appreciate the responses that you're giving, thank you.
Thank you, and before I read the motion that we discussed this afternoon, I just wanted to clarify something that we discussed called the drop-dead date, since we're asking questions of staff. Dr. Moore, would you like to discuss what that means, because I think it is imperative that we understand what that is before we vote?
So, in preparing for this evening's meeting, tonight's meeting, whatever you want to call it, I looked at the drop-dead date, this would be the date in which we could order the materials, the resources, needed to have them with enough time in order to ensure they are in the hands of teachers with enough time prior to pre-planning. with enough time prior to pre-planning, so they can have them in their hands. At the same time, enough time for the district team to work, pull coaches and teachers together to write our pacing guides. We are not dependent, and we do not outsource professional development in this district. We don't say, oh, well, thank you, go in and teach our teachers how to use this curriculum. It's vetted by us. We are the gatekeepers in terms of what's getting into our pacing guides, which is what we're asking our teachers to do. It is vetted. Yes, we will vet every resource every single year in order to ensure that it is appropriate for our students. Our teachers live in this community, our teachers are this community. There's the single number-one job that is the most in this county, that of a teacher. To discredit teachers saying that they don't have the skills and the ability to understand what they need to expose their students from is exposing, is selling our teachers short. Now I've lost my point, or what the question was.
I asked you for the drop-dead date, sir.
Okay. That's what happens. To be honest with you, when you start talking the business of the board at nine o'clock, you end up saying things like critical race theory instead of culturally responsive teacher, and you have people from the community coming up here teaching. That just proves my point even more. When you start talking about the business of the board, this is the public school board, and it's nine o'clock when we start talking the business of the board, and you misspeak. The drop-dead date would be October, I'm sorry, I already need to go to bed.
I believe July.
July 6th. But as we debrief, that would be the day that we would need to order the materials. So the drop-dead date actually would be, it needs to be approved by the second of July, which allows us to come back on the 6th and place that order so it can be back in the hands of teachers.
Okay, thank you.
To clarify on that drop-dead date, because of the process in order to order, the decision has to be made, you said, by the second, in order to get the order out by the 6th, in order to have books received two weeks prior to the opening of schools, correct?
To the Chair, yes.
And that presumes that absolutely nothing goes wrong. That presumes there's no hurricane, there's no gas crisis as there was, which didn't affect Florida. But I was in North Carolina during that, and we couldn't, you couldn't get gas. Like, it presumes that everything operates as we anticipate it will, with no hitches, no delays, no miscalculations, no nothing.
To the Chair, and it's extending it by about a week and a half. So the answer to the question is, it's already late.
And we're already, yes.
The answer to your question is yes, but if me and Mr. Meyer are going to get in our trucks and go pick up the curriculum ourselves, then that's what we'll do, in a hurricane.
Just out of curiosity, when do we normally, in a non-controversial year, when would we normally place an order for books and have them received in the district by?
I'm sorry, Chair, you said a non-controversial year.
If this process.
So what we did as a system, and I think the board has become familiar with how I like to be at least six months ahead. We're prepping items that we'll be discussing in two months from now in our last SEMEs. We went through this process, or we're in this boat because we are trying to be proactive in looking at curriculums prior to April 1st and the release of the date. And one of the conversations Mr. Meyer has had with some board members as well as myself is our first legislative priority next year needs to be to set this timeframe. So we have this information January 1st. And if anything good comes from this, a lot will come good from this, that's one of those particular things.
That's a great idea.
Okay, so before we go into further discussion, we actually do need to have the motion.
Wait, 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 Mrs. Barrenborg, I'm sorry, but you mentioned something else earlier today that I think is important for us to bring up again, and I might have a question about it. You mentioned piggybacking from another district.
Yes, on a procurement.
Can you talk a little bit about that and why? Because if that comes up again, we need to be able to explain why that doesn't.
That would be, yeah, I'm going to defer that to our board attorney, who can explain piggybacking on procurement.
And I'm sorry, and you said it was, the research that you did was that.
Highlands.
Highlands? I wrote Hillsborough. Highlands County? Can you, I don't want to say, I don't want to misquote you.
Highlands County was going to try to select Amplify even though it wasn't on the appeals list. But they have a different procedure than we do. That's why I asked about piggybacking. Because sometimes you can piggyback and avoid a lot of the long delays and 30 days and 40 days and all that if you piggyback on a process, but the process has to be aligned to the process that we use. I'll defer to the board attorney.
And if I can add, it has to be consistent with our own specific Indian River County policies that are board-approved.
It is late. I am sorry. Go ahead.
The procurement process that's allowed for school boards, as well as other local governments in the state of Florida, if another government has gone through a bid process, God bless you, and has selected to purchase a thing, and that bid process allows for other local governments here in the state of Florida to also buy off of that awarded contract, whatever that thing is, that would allow the school board, we call it piggyback, to piggyback on their bid process, to piggyback on their contract and buy that same thing that they went through a bid process for, right? So that's the general procurement process of piggybacking. When Mrs. Barrenborg mentioned that another school board had gone through a procurement process and had gotten to the end and had selected Amplify, my first question was, how did they do it? Is it possible to piggyback? But the answer is no. They didn't go through a procurement process, a locally-developed procurement process to buy something not on the state list. What I understand that school district did was they followed a similar process to what Indian River followed, and they did a selection committee to buy off the state list. They used the state list as the basis for their process. But at the end of the day, I understand they'll be selecting Amplify even though Amplify is not on the state list, which is not in compliance with the statutory provisions, and it doesn't comply with our policy that says you either select off the state list and go through that procurement, or you do a non-state-adopted process, and you select off of that list. This other school district is using some hybrid, and I cannot recommend that you piggyback off of this contract that was not the basis of an open procurement process.
But why would an Amplify be a non, a non-state-adopted instructional material when they are indeed not state-adopted for elementary?
They would be. And in order to adopt non-state-adopted materials, we would then need to have our own procurement process with an advertisement that said, K-5 publishers, come one, come all, to Indian River. Show us all, everything that you're interested in selling to us for K-5 instructional materials. Here are the standards. We would then have our own committee, like what the state had, our own committee here in Indian River, who would have to go through each page of all those materials, be sure that everything complies with the standards. The superintendent would have to sign an affidavit saying, yes, these non-state-adopted materials comply with the state standards. And at the end of that process, instructional materials would be selected, not on the state list, a non-state-approved list.
But you just said that Amplify would be a non.
Yes.
Okay. So what am I missing? They would already be a non.
Indian River did not go through a non-state-adopted process.
For procurement.
Correct.
And it's a different process than the one we went through for a state-adopted curriculum process. So we would have to stop, back up.
Start again.
Redo the process to go through the non-state-approved procurement process, re-advertise, re-have the 30-days review, re-go to committee, all of that. And then the superintendent would have to certify that, yes, I'm good, these meet the state standards, and I support that we can go forward with a non-state-approved curriculum. But that process would take, as I understand it, anywhere from at best, uh, months, two to three months, at which point we're already starting school. Am I understanding that correctly, Mr. Gresta?
Yes, ma'am.
Just want to be clear.
Okay.
So that's the problem. It's a whole other three months. People start school with no books.
So, so let me read the motion.
We'll start school with books, just not the new books.
We haven't gotten to discussion yet. Okay, we haven't even gotten to a discussion yet, okay? We were asking questions of staff. So I'm going to, I'm going to state the motion that was asked to be stated tonight, and we'll either get a second or we won't. And the motion is approve Amplify if it is approved by the DOE by July 6th. But now we're backing that up to July 2nd, correct?
Uh, no, it would have to be July 1st because we would have to meet on the 1st or the 2nd, and we would have to schedule a meeting to approve it.
No, no, no.
We'd be approving it now. You're right, you're right. Sorry, it's late.
So July 2nd?
Is it, it's so.
Okay, July 2nd. If Amplify is not approved by the DOE by the drop-dead date, then HMH will be ordered. That is the item that was discussed today that was asked to be stated tonight. Is there a second?
I second it.
Okay.
And, and, oh, sorry.
Hold on one sec. I've got to get to that page. I am so tired. Okay. So there is a second. It was Mr. Barefoot?
Barefoot, yes.
Okay. All right.
The motion was put by you, Mrs. Barrenborg?
The motion was put by me because we moved it from consent to, to, where are we? Thank you, action. So I just met with the superintendent between those two meetings and wrote that. So I have a first, sorry, who was first? Me. Okay, and before we, hello, I need to know, I'm so tired right now.
Yes, ma'am.
Do we need to vote? We need to discuss first and then vote.
Yes, ma'am.
Because we do not want to vote on something that we haven't further discussed.
Discussion first, yes, ma'am.
That's right. Okay. Who would like to talk? I think Doc Jones, I have seen your hand up. Go ahead.
Thank you very much. I want to thank everyone who came out tonight and spoke to us. I think it was a really good meeting, and I think people presented both sides very well. I think a couple people talked about the roles and responsibilities of school board members, and I know each and every one of us up here takes those responsibilities very carefully. We're here for all students, and looking at the state statute of our responsibilities, we have a big job, and we are here to do it. The process, which I have been through as a teacher and a district person for textbook adoption, is a lot of work. It began in October. We had all the information on our website, and I think the committee did a really good job. In the workshop today, we talked a little bit about this. I brought it up. I think about two-thirds of our counties are using HMH in either elementary, middle, or high, and I think so far all but two or three have adopted their K through 5 language arts. So we're a little bit behind here. I took some time to look at the curriculum maps for 612, and you can tell already curriculum and instruction put a lot of work in there. The curriculum maps help the teachers as far as pacing, when the unit tests will be taken, kind of helping them plan with the block schedule at middle and high schools. Because if you remember, we started that with COVID, and that was a really quick turnaround for teachers. So I looked at those curriculum maps, very, very impressed, and we also have them in math. Right now, we're behind in K-5. We've not started it because we have not adopted a series yet. So obviously, a former educator, teacher, and every other role, I'm concerned about that. We all know Amplify is the first choice. That's a given. We've talked about that several times. Right now, HMH is state-adopted, and Governor DeSantis said no CRT, so no CRT. I think that's pretty clear, and what Mr. Meyer read into the information today at the workshop was also very clear. And I want to reiterate, SEL is not CRT. SEL is not CRT. I'm going to date myself. A long time ago, I was teaching it, and SEL was part of my classroom and all other teachers' classrooms, about a warm, welcoming environment. It is not CRT. If you look at the curriculum maps, benchmarks are given to us by the state. The curricular support is what we do in the county. How are we going to get there to that benchmark? And that's so very important. And I know we always have to, like Dr. Moore said, we're helping with the coaches and everything, that we're moving along with those areas, and we're helping our teachers to make sure they understand the pacing, they understand the objectives, they understand what we can use with our unit tests and how we use that data to move forward. So our teachers can do this. Our teachers can do this job as far as what we are expecting with their benchmarks. But we cannot, we cannot put them at a disadvantage of getting this to them late. We cannot put our students at a disadvantage by getting this to them late. Again, like I said, Governor DeSantis and Mr. Corcoran, this is a state-adopted series. We understand there is not to be CRT. We understand that. But I'm just saying, whatever happens today, whether we have a drop-dead date for Amplify and that's voted upon and we move forward, don't put our kids and teachers behind because it will affect us in ways that we don't want it to affect us. Thank you.
Okay, who would like to speak next?
Sure. Although, like everybody else, I'm tired, and so one thing I want to say is I want to thank Mr. Barefoot, because it was Mr. Barefoot who this afternoon put forward this option, and I just want to acknowledge that it, having been read into the record, that it was your original idea, and I want to thank you for that. I echo a lot, and I'm not, I'm not going to repeat it all, but I echo a lot of what Dr. Jones just said. This notion, and as one of the speakers, Mrs. Gibbs pointed out, the notion that teachers have some kind of illicit agenda here, the notion that we are demonizing teachers in some way. As Mrs. Gibbs said, teaching is really hard. You know, teaching is hard. People, people come in. I appreciated her comments as a former teacher. Teachers come in because this is a passion, because this is, they are driven to do. This is a mission, this is a vocation, this is. And I think one of our jobs here, in addition to listening to the community, and I appreciate the very balanced comments tonight, and one of our jobs is to support the teachers in doing the best job they can. And I think some of the evidence that we have of having done that this year is our increase in graduation rates, our increase in third-grade reading rates, our decrease in academic disparity, our decrease in graduation disparity, our outperforming the state on pretty much every measure that's come out so far, I think, is a testament to the ability of this superintendent and this board to keep that first and foremost. And I think that is true in this decision as well. Yes, it's our, yes, it's our responsibility. Yes, it's our decision. I am absolutely aware of that, as I think is everybody who sits here. And I have been aware of it for the last two and a half years that I've been sitting here. And I'll be honest, I think we're doing a darn good job. And I think my evidence for that is not my opinion. My evidence for that is the measures as they come out that indicate our performance. So this is not my, this is not because of how I feel about it, this is because of what the data are telling us. So that said, I'm good with this motion. I want to get this process moving forward so that we provide the best support, coaching, training, professional development, and curriculum instruction to our teachers to get moving for our students.
Mr. Barefoot, would you like to speak?
Sure. First, first of all, I, after sitting through the last several meetings, the tone tonight was so much better than it's been, and different points of view, but I thought that all the speakers, as you mentioned, Mrs. Barrenborg, early on, was civil, it was respectful of everyone, and that's great. Some of you have heard me say this before. I said it once, I think at that retirement dinner for teachers and administrators at Quail Valley. Parents are really important. Students are really important. That's what everybody's here for. But without teachers, the rest of it doesn't matter. An educational institution revolves around teachers. And you've all said it in different ways, but if we don't support the teachers that selected. ways, but if we don't support the teachers that, that selected these two curriculums, and let's hope that Amplify gets approved between now and two weeks or almost two weeks, I think we put them, and I think, Dr. Jones, you've all said it one way or another, we put them in a distinct disadvantage. And so, I'm for, for supporting the teachers that provided the input to the committee that selected the two curriculums. It's unfortunate Amplify didn't make the state list. Let's hope that it does over the next 10 days or so. And that's really, there is all to say. Let's, it's, it's time to move on, and hopefully, we'll have a positive vote.
Okay. Mrs. Rosario?
Thank you. Our job as school board members is to vote on what is in the best interest of all students. We create and approve policy. We approve our budget. We set the goals, the vision, the mission. We work closely with the superintendent on the strategic plan. Approving curriculum is one of those aspects. As a homeschool mom myself, I have the distinct privilege to choose the curriculum for my son. In this particular case, the school district chooses the curriculum, but as we all know, it is based on the approval, essentially, the approval of what comes to us from the DOE. Those that are already vetted and approved by the DOE are submitted to the district for the district's vetting process, and then, of course, a, a curriculum is chosen from, from those options. I understand what is at stake. I also understand what has yet to be defined. There are still many things that still need to be defined. They need to be discussed. They need to be presented to the, to this board so that there is a clear understanding where everyone is speaking the same language on what, on what some of these topics are. And I'm looking forward to that discussion and to that presentation. I think that would be critical to the professional development moving forward of our staff as well. These items, or the items that have been banned by the DOE are not in our Florida best standards. They are not in our strategic plan. They are not to be inclusive within any aspect of our teaching and our learning plans per the Florida Department of Education. So, why would we adopt a curriculum from a publishing company that has made a public commitment to all of these things and, above all, has made an admission, an admission to, and I'm quoting, "critical wellness," which is about putting the pedagogy, critical race theory, and then student wellness at the center of culturally responsive teaching and of the work of creating curriculum in order to get a better, ideal student outcome? I do not believe HMH is the curriculum for this district. So, what happens in a year or two when online resources are revised or edited or supplemental materials need to be added by HMH, if possible, which has happened in the past? Do they automatically have to adopt the examples? Do we, rather, automatically have to adopt whatever they submit to us? Do we have an opportunity to reject? Who will monitor every page, every update, every supplemental material consumable? I still have a lot of answers that have, questions that have been unanswered. A publishing company, in my opinion, should not be so heavily biased. It should not be one-sided. It should not be left or right leaning. It should be 100% neutral. A truly neutral publishing company should be focused on the standards and the standards alone and not on politically divisive content. The teaching and learning opportunities, reading passages, following, follow-up assignments, extra materials, and so on, should be absolutely free of indoctrinations and free of all future possibilities of being introduced, of our students being introduced to these ideologies, of which HMH has not done. They are not a neutral publisher. As such, I do not trust them to produce material that would completely be free of any of these things. I trust our teachers, but I don't trust the publishing company, HMH. So, let's talk about that trust for a minute. Why don't I trust HMH? They have made public commitments and admissions, and yet, we have heard that in the pages of the books, there is no critical race theory, but they have made these public declarations anyway? That's pretty concerning to me. I think that should be pretty concerning to a lot of people. Why would they make these public declarations and then not include those items in their textbooks? They are indeed a publishing company. If they made those public declarations for those who support these ideologies, that would be pretty upsetting because you would want your publishing company to follow through with what they believe. And in this case, we are told that it's not in the pages of the book, and yet, it's on their website and in the foreword of their books. Either way you look at it, I find the methodology of these issues pretty untrustworthy. Mr. Anthony Brown tonight was absolutely right. History should not be changed. It should not be erased. It should not be ignored. But thank God, we're not selecting a history curriculum. That's not now, nor has it ever been, a discussion or consideration of this school board. All history is critical. It is a good thing that our history, all history, is important. We're voting on language arts, not history. We have never espoused, this board has never espoused, that injustices or racism never We have never espoused that that's what we want to do moving forward, ever. What we have agreed to as a school district and as a board is the importance of changing the equity issues in this district, of increasing opportunities for access to higher-level coursework, AB, AP, IB, and dual enrollment included. We have agreed to make reaching unitary status a priority, as well as closing the achievement gap, among many, many, many other goals. The sad part of all of this is that there are so many misunderstandings, misinterpretations, and misuses of quotes and wrong assumptions that it's totally distorting the main issue. We have never accused teachers of indoctrinating our students. We have never said, nor have we ever believed, that teachers are responsible for what is happening because they are not. People who believe critical race theory is inappropriate believe that because they do not want, believe that because it isn't that they, they want to ignore black history or change history, it's because critical race theory focuses on black and white issues. In their opinion, it is because it focuses on racism to teach against racism. And I'm quoting from a constituent that came tonight. It is because critical race theory believes we live in a country that is systemically racist. It is because they believe that they don't want their children to look at skin color or feel isolated because of their skin color, or be told that they are inherently racist or oppressed because of their skin color, or that they might be, another quote tonight, there might be a redistribution of suffering. And even if these viewpoints were wrong, those on the side, or on the pro side of critical race theory would call them racist, would call them closed-minded or selfish. Those are the reasons why those who, people who do not believe in critical race theory believe, don't believe in it. As a mom, a teacher, an educator, a board member, and a lifelong learner, I want to sleep well at night, knowing that I not only selected the best curriculum, but that I would have selected a curriculum that I wouldn't have to worry later on down the line how their ideology is gonna show up in the classroom. I would prefer to spend a little bit more money on the curriculum and wait a little bit longer and get it right than spend millions of dollars on a curriculum that comes from a company that is, is not trustworthy. I would rather have an ethical, unbiased, 100% neutral, 100% standards-driven, age-appropriate curriculum, one that will raise students' achievements, student achievement, close the, help us close the academic gap, and drive teachers to be better teachers in their Tonight, what is on the floor is a vote for both.
Hello?
Did you, did you want to say something?
I'd actually like to call the question.
Okay, well, I'm, I'm almost done. Tonight, what, what is on the floor is a vote for one or the other. I would like, I would have preferred to have a vote where we are voting for either Amplify or HMH. So, I absolutely empathize with a lot of the concerns tonight, not just tonight, but over the last several months. I will not be supporting this vote. I will not be supporting this decision. I do, however, want to make it clear that I do, however, support our superintendent. I do support the work of the district. I do support the work of equity. He knows that quite well. My decision and my vote tonight is, is speaking, quite honestly, against the publishers and against the DOE, who has, in my opinion, not completely accurately or appropriately vetted the curriculum that has brought, been brought down to us. I do hope that Amplify is on, or is, is approved coming forward, but the way that this is brought forth to us tonight, I will not be able to support.
Okay. I would actually, before I get to say what I want to say, I want to amend my, my motion, and I'll tell you why.
After I said all of that?
Mm-hmm. Dr. Moore, I'd like to, you, you gave us today, this afternoon, you talked about July 6th, July 6th, July 6th, says I dropped a dead date.
For ordering.
I understand that. And, Dr. Moore, are you over there? Okay. So, I also know what it's like to order books.
Me, too.
Have done it. Is it possible, I'm asking this question, I know it's more work on staff, but is it possible to get the two orders ready and give us that July 6th date?
I'm sorry, say that again?
Is it possible to have two orders ready to go and give us that July 6th date? So, if the board votes, can we vote for July 6th for you to do, push the button and order the books?
To the chair, I, I will prepare both orders on, the question is, when I leave work on July 6th, I can place the order, then, then yes, I will place it for Amplify if at the end of business on that particular day, they have that-
So, they have that window until that day?
Yes.
Okay, so, I want to amend my motion to change the date from July 2nd to July 6th. And now that I want to be able to say my piece, I have made several phone calls. That's why I'm so punchy, because I've called Representative Groll, who's been very, very helpful for, for this. I have called commissioners' offices. I've called vice chancellor's office, the chancellor's office. What is Kathy Seed's position? Because everybody gives me her. She is, okay, so, everybody refers me to her, and we're on a first-name basis now. So, I have a very, very hopeful feeling that Amplify is going to be approved before July 6th. And I just feel like, all the conversations I've had, that they're now aware, very much aware, that this is an imminent concern of ours. They weren't so aware of it when I called earlier. They said, "Oh, we don't have to make that decision until next week or the week after." No, no, no. Boards are deciding. Boards are voting now. And I think sometimes you have to let the DOE know that, you know, hello, the school districts, the schools need you to make decisions a little quicker sometimes. So, I really feel like, board members, that this can happen by July 6th. So, I'm asking for July 6th to be the dead, the date that you push the button to order the books and make that decision.
I'll second that motion.
Thank you, sir.
I'll second your-
Hold on, hold on, wait. You gotta withdraw the first motion.
Yes, I have to withdraw, I, I amended it. I didn't withdraw it.
Right.
I amended the date.
Okay.
And I just got a second on my amendment. Okay?
Right now-
I would just point out to everybody that July 5th is a holiday.
That's, that's exactly right, and that's part of why I wanted to do that.
So, I guess practically speaking, any, any decision made is gonna be made on Friday, July 2nd, but whether it's the 2nd or the 6th, whatever the latest date is, is, if the 6th is the date, let's go with it.
Thank you. So-
Mrs. Baronburg, may I for a moment?
Sure, go ahead.
Are we in discussion?
No. Well, yeah, we are, but I haven't, go ahead.
You have to finish yours.
Yeah, I haven't gotten to say my piece yet, if that's okay. Part of what we discussed this, this afternoon, not this morning, this afternoon, is some of the concerns a lot of people have. Granted, the concerns with what the company stands for or states and their policies and their websites, and sometimes I'm not a fan of some of the statements I've seen, but I also know that some of the forwards and introductions have been of concern to people. And I asked Mr. Meyer this afternoon about whether or not those forwards or introductions can be not used for our pacing guides and for our PD. Mr. Meyer, can you speak to that? The ones that are concerns.
To the chair, yeah, absolutely, you know, I think that the focal point of our training will definitely be the, what the students are doing, right? What, what we are actually doing to cover the standards, those, those pages at the beginning. While I'm not trying to, you know, discount their importance, they do speak to educational philosophies that, you know, some of our teachers may or may not share, quite honestly. But, but what I do know that the teachers do want to do is they want the students to have the, the highest outcomes, and so, our focus, NC and I, will certainly be around the materials, the student-facing materials, the activities, and not the stuff that's in the front. Not that, you know, I'm trying to pass judgment either for or against an agreement or disagreement with HMH. I'll just tell you, from a pragmatic standpoint, we're gonna focus more around delivering instruction that's aligned to the standards that gets the outcome.
So, the governor has stated that there'll be no CRT in our schools. How can we ensure that there won't be, then?
Well, I absolutely, as I, as I spoke this afternoon, you know, this isn't just an elementary ELA directive, right? We are going to have to provide professional development to all of our instructional coaches in every content area, math, science, social studies, to ensure that, that none of the material that we are presenting to students meets that. And so, as one of the, the parents spoke, that feels that some things are already going on, we, we, we need to set up a process and procedure so that parents can notify us if that's occurring. Certainly, through the materials that we are adopting and that we are pushing out at the district level, we would make sure that those do not contain that. But, but I don't discount the fact that, you know, there, there may be an opportunity for, you know, bad actors, as you say, to potentially do things either intentionally or neglectfully, not knowing, and there does need to be a process to make sure that we can identify that if it were to happen.
Okay. And Mrs. Rosario brought up, I'm not sure what it was, it was a recording today about the website for HMH and her concerns about the website. I do, I did watch Collier County's meetings. I watched both of them. One, because I wanted to see what it was like to run a meeting when you have a lot of people upset about a topic, seeing that this was my first meeting to run. But I also watched because I wanted to know, they had selected HMH, but there were so many concerns- concerns about it, that they went to the company and they asked, they wrote to the company a letter, I guess, and asked the company to write back answers to their questions. And so the company did write a letter, and I heard in there something about the concerns on the website for HMH. And so I did ask Mr. Meyer if he could talk to that letter for us about, I don't know if you want to read the whole letter, but about the concerns that Collier County brought up with HMH.
Would you like me to read the letter?
Is it long? Is it really long?
I don't want to mis-summarize it.
Okay.
I certainly can, we can, you know, provide the link, but as you, as you stated, it, it is from the CEO of HMH to the School Board Chair of Collier County. Dear Mr. Carter, thank you for your letter dated June 8th, 2021, concerning the public objections to Collier County's board adopted K-5 ELA instructional materials. HMH into Reading, Florida. I value and respect the feedback and opinions of the communities HMH serves, including, of course, Collier County. All of us curriculum providers like HMH, school districts, classroom, teachers, and parents, have a critical role to play in the education of children in our communities. HMH into Reading, Florida, was built to support Florida educators in confidently teaching 100% of the new best standards for ELA. Unequivocally, HMH's program neither contains nor teaches Critical Race Theory, nor is Critical Race Theory embedded in HMH K-5 ELA instructional materials. In answer to your other questions, HMH is adding language to the articles submitted by third-party contributors to our blog that makes it clear that the viewpoints expressed are their own. Moreover, these views do not necessarily influence the development of instructional materials, which are completely apolitical. The statement concerning the value of Black Lives made in June 2020 in the traumatic aftermath of the murder of George Floyd was not a political one, rather, the intent was to express our care and support for our Black employees, as well as teachers and students. Because we stand by this commitment, we stand by our statement. The purpose was to convey that we value Black Lives. It was not to support or endorse the third-party organization Black Lives Matter. HMH does not advocate for any particular ideology, political organization, or agenda. Our aim is simply to help teachers teach and students learn. I appreciate your concerns. You shared on behalf of families in your district, and we agree that politics do not belong in the classroom. HMH remains steadfast in our purpose to create high-quality instructional materials that teachers can use with their students to help them realize their learning potential. Sincerely, Jack Lynch, CEO.
Okay, thank you, so they addressed their concerns. I really feel like Amplify is going to get on the list, I really do. I've had so many conversations in the last 24 hours that I really feel like that's going to happen. But in case it doesn't, I do not want our students to not have a book, and I certainly understand the fact that we have to do something that is approved by the Department of Education. And for that reason, we are kind of stuck in this position. You know, both, both books have high qualities to them. I'm excited about Amplify because of the trade books, because of the rich texts that are there, the multicultural text that is there, the diverse learning that is there, the tolerance that is there. But I also know that we need a book, and we can't just rely on the books we've had in the past because we have new standards. And I think that's what people don't really understand, is that you just can't stay in the past on this. It's unfortunate, we're in a tough situation. And that's why I've been struggling and calling up to the DOE so much, because I just don't know if they've heard our, our calls for help, and I believe they have finally. So I'm just, I'm really hopeful that we're going to have Amplify in our schools in the fall. So I'm, at this point, unless there's any other discussion.
Just one question. So if we extend this, Dr. Moore, to July 6th, can you go over that timeline again? When will we get the books? When will we do the PD? When will we start everything for our teachers?
Through the chair, we'll start everything on July 6th. I would anticipate, knowing, on July 6th, validating through the floor Department of Education. It's not like all of a sudden they're just going to appear on the list, we'll be able to say. It is, more than likely, we will know Friday after this meeting, if it's anticipated or not, but we'll still give you that 6th, as we do with everything else. We will task the assignments over the next several weeks in order to ensure that we're ready for the opening of schools in terms of the delivery of materials, the professional development, the vetting of the pacing guides.
Okay, so I'm going to call for the vote.
On the amendment.
On the amendment, thank you.
You're voting on the amendment only.
The amendment to July 6th. Back to July 6th?
Yes.
Okay. So can I get a, a vote on the amendment, right? So we just vote no motion, because that is the motion? Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay.
So that's the amendment. Now you need to vote on the.
Now we need to vote, okay. Could you read that back, because I have it written back, several pages. You have it.
The, with the amendment, it's if Amplify is on the state list by July the 6th, the superintendent is directed to order Amplify as the K-5 instructional materials. If it is not on the state list by July the 6th, then the superintendent is directed to move forward with HMH as the adopted curriculum.
Okay. I'll ask for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
No.
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, that's four to one. It passes.
All right, next lady, Jen.
And to clarify, if the decision, if Amplify has to come down presumably by a certain time on the 6th, right? So if Amplify is approved by 12:00 PM on the 6th, that gives you, if Amplify is approved by 4:00 PM on the 6th, that does not give you time.
As the item is written, I'm 100% confident we will, we will all be able to deliver.
Okay.
Thank you. Okay, moving to superintendent's report.
I do have a, a number of items, and first and foremost, Madam Chair, want to acknowledge, A, your preparation for this board meeting, and B, the facilitation of the meeting absolutely outstanding in a very, very hard time. I think your remarks about how everyone conducted themselves is something as a community that we could be very, very proud of. Also, during the consent agenda, very excited that we are able to bring on three new staff members, Director of Student Services, our Equity Coordinator, and our Parent and Community Coordinator. Three high-skilled individuals coming into our community who have been looking at the great things that are happening in this district, so we're very excited to get them in here and begin to see some of the traction that they'll have in terms of supporting and improving the quality of instruction here in our county. And those are the updates, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Okay. School Board Members Matters. Dr. Schiff?
The only two things I have are attending FSBA a couple of weeks ago, which was terrific. I brought back a lot of good information, one of which I had hoped to put on discussion for today, but I knew it was.
Thank you for not doing it.
The superintendent requested that I hold that because it was a very full day.
I was right, I was right.
But one of, in fact, it was the super, it was the other presenter at the superintendent's presentation who made a very interesting presentation about student board members, about having students sit on the board. And I think, Dr., no, I'm sorry, you weren't there.
I was there.
You were there. But it was a really interesting presentation that I look forward to us being able to discuss as a board, the pros and cons, and if, if we see that as something viable for us.
Is there a board right now in Florida that's doing that? I'm just curious.
This was out of, was Flagler, I believe, wasn't it?
Okay, just because I want to watch one of the meetings, okay.
I think it was Flagler, no?
What I'll do in preparation for that meeting.
Miami has it.
Flagler had, but Flagler, I'll be able to forward the presentation, and you can watch a clip of that particular students, but yes, in my former district, for the 24 years that I was there, there was always a student who sat on the, as a student advisor to the board.
Thank you.
So I know there's at least two counties, and I suspect there's others. Thank you for doing that research, otherwise I'll do it or I'll support you in the, yeah. There were other things, there was some really good presentation about mental health and mental health awareness for students. What was, I think, most valuable about being there was the opportunity to come together with school board members from districts all around Florida to discuss many of the things that we are commonly experiencing in this moment, and to be able to have a chance, because obviously, I can't talk to any of you about it outside of these meetings. But it was a really welcome opportunity to talk with dozens of school board members from other places. As I mentioned, I was able also to talk with Jessica from Rutledge, I talked about that this afternoon, so huge amount of really productive conversations that came out of attending that meeting, and I'm, I'm really grateful to have, to have gone to it as well. The other thing I just want to mention is I was, as Dr. Jones mentioned earlier, I was able to attend the dedication ceremony this Saturday morning for Gifford High School, and I always, I'm afraid I'm going to say it wrong, Hosee Park?
Schuman, yeah.
Schuman.
Hosee.
Schuman Park.
I really should get that in my head, but it's late. Which was a terrific dedication ceremony, it was really, I'm so pleased that we were able, you know, that as many people showed up from that event as they did tonight, it was a real testament to the significance of that event, and to be able to participate in that, to represent the board there, was a real honor. I then also went over to the festivities at Gifford Park for the rest of the afternoon, which was very hot. It was, it was a hot, humid pea soup day, as like all them. There were performances all day long, but it was really particularly, and I want to acknowledge that we have a new federal holiday that was approved last week, Juneteenth. I am wholly in support of that federal holiday, and I look forward to being able to do the things that are not simply symbolic, but are substantive supports of what we need to do in this county and in this state and in this country to recognize our, our history. And it was an honor to be at those events on the first nationally recognized, celebrated Juneteenth event, so I'm really grateful for that. And that's all I have.
Thank you. Mrs. Rosario?
Yeah, I, I did all the sentiments that Dr. Schiff mentioned with regard to FSBA. It was wonderful. I look forward to the conversation to, with regard to the student board member representative. Other than that, I've just had a few meetings that canceled, but nothing else to report.
Okay, thank you. Dr. Jones?
I attended the PD at Sebastian River High School led by Mr. Meyer and Kelly Basura with school improvement, and it was excellent, and assisted principals and principals, a lot of collaborative sharing, good job. Visited a couple of summer school programs, Storm Grow with the Crossover Mission and the math, which was absolutely wonderful. Summer, summer school cannot just be sitting in the desk, and, and this combination with Crossover Mission with the basketball is absolutely excellent. Also visited a VPK at Vero Beach Elementary, and it's great to see the students getting ready for everything. I want to commend Dr. Moore and all of the district staff and all of our teachers and administrators. I know we've just gotten the third grade scores back, but just, just in general, for the year that you've had with a, a lot of challenges, especially with COVID, but just very, very proud of you for being in this district, and I appreciate you. And African-American students in third grade going up 3%, Dr. Moore, and maintaining with 99% tested in third grade is exemplary. I attended the Equity Committee last week, moving forward. I like the structure with Mr. Browning and the team right now, I'm kind of concentrating on one thing at a time, but as Dr. Moore said, we are committed to this, and when we do get unitary status, we will make sure it's in policy so that we do not stop with these strategies for success for African-American students. Be following that very closely. And again, the Juneteenth celebration was really, really wonderful, hearing people like Dr. Ron Hudson and Joe Idale speak warmed my hearts. For those of you who know a lot, who knew a lot of the people who walked in the room tonight, we had some legends here. We had legends of this community and what they're doing for our students. And again, opening Gifford Middle and closing Gifford Middle 6th, very, very connected to that community and what they've done for Inman River County School District, and I'm just very, very thankful for each and every one of them. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Barefoot?
I don't really have anything other than, than I thought that what Dr. Jones just said in terms of the Equity Committee and focusing on one major issue at a time is smart, and I think we will make a lot of progress. I would like to congratulate Mrs. Barrenborg for running a great meeting. You've done such a good job, we're going to let you do it forever.
She's going to be nope.
Oh, boy.
But I have nothing else to report. Very, very good meeting, very productive, excellent tone. Thank you, everybody.
Okay, thank you. I have a couple of things. I attended IRC zoning and planning meeting, and the Liberty Park has now been proposed and is going through. Liberty Park surrounds Liberty Magnet School. And I had some concerns. I don't speak up at those meetings because I'm not a voting member, but I do when it comes to schools. And I did bring up my concerns, voiced my concerns, and they, they said they were valid concerns, so they are looking into them. I'm concerned about, there's only one in and out right now. They will be building a second one, but that's towards their Phase 3, and that's going to be a real concern for our flow of traffic for the school, but also 66 Avenue is already messed up from during school pickup and drop-off times. And it, I believe it kind of interferes with a lot of the traffic going to the other schools, too. So that's just going to be even more fun, but I'm not sure when that, that project will start, but it's not imminent, it will start in a couple of years, so we'll pay attention to that. I did also attend Pre-Ignite with administrators, and I like the fact that you are streamlining all the plans. Thank you as a former principal, because I don't know how many hours I spent on the weekends building plans and building plans and building plans that somebody may have not ever read. So it's really nice that all the plans are being streamlined into, with the strategic plan, so I appreciate that. The school improvement plan should be a living document, they shouldn't be something that sits on the shelf. I also got in on the Equity Committee meeting. I thought it was a really good committee meeting, and they had a little bit of data to look at, not quite a lot, but they had a little bit of data to be able to go through, so hopefully more and more data will come through for you to be able to share with them. Math Camp, I did get, thank you, Ms. Basura, for touring me around Math Camp. Wow, Math Camp, and I think they're, it's mathletes, right? I want to say that correctly, because nobody wants to really attend Math Camp, but they really had a great time, and I, I went because I thought, how many kids can you get to go to Math Camp? It went from 20 kids in the past to 120 this year because they added Crossover Mission, thank you for them, and the Tech Ventures, which I think was great. Kids got to choose between making robots or playing in the gym, and me, I would have had a really hard choice with that. I wanted to do all of them, I'm sure. And then the last thing I have is Juneteenth. Coming from Texas, that's been a holiday in Texas for a long time, and when I moved here and no one knew what Juneteenth was, I was kind of surprised by that. So, you know, that's, that's been something that we've known in Texas for a while, because Texas was the state that, that, that happened, so. With that, Superintendent, do you have a, a closing?
It's 10:08, no, I do not.
All right, so I will adjourn the meeting at 10:08.